Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for April 18th, 2006. At this point, could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Michael.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. This morning, we're honored to have Bishop Tim Cooley with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints from my district in Thousand Oaks to come give us a moment of affirmation. So Bishop Cooley, if you'd like to come up to the podium there. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson Parks and supervisors, good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to be here today to share some thoughts. I've known Chairperson Parks for many years, and I thank her for her years of service to our community, the examples she's set, especially as a mom first and civic leader second. She reminds me of a quote by one of our church leaders that says, "No other success in life can compensate for failure in the home." Since I pray through one name, and that's not really allowed, I'll forego the formal prayer today and share some thoughts. Our church is known as a people that are pioneers who brought civilization out west. In an ever-changing world, each of us has the opportunity to be pioneers and bring changes for good to a people and a society that are seeking guidance. When making decisions and laws that govern our county, each of you has a responsibility to ask yourself, where will it lead? May I mention and explore two areas of concern. I will use selected quotes from Elder Downage Oakes, an apostle in our church and a retired Supreme Court, state Supreme Court justice. First, a concern about current overemphasis on rights and underemphasis on responsibilities. Where will it lead in our public lives? Quote, "No society is so strong that it can support continued increases in citizen rights while neglecting to foster comparable increases in citizen responsibilities and obligations." Yet, our legal system continues to recognize new rights even as we increasingly ignore old responsibilities. For example, so-called no-fault divorces which give either spouse the right to dissolve a marriage at will have obscured the vital importance of responsibilities in marriage. Similarly, I believe it is a delusion to think that we can help children by defining and enforcing their rights. We do more for children by trying to reinforce the responsibilities of parents, natural or adoptive, even when those responsibilities are not legally enforceable and colloquial. The same principles apply in public life. We cannot raise our public well-being by adding to our inventory of individual rights. Civic responsibilities like honesty, self-reliance, participation in the democratic process, and devotion to the common good are essential to the governance and preservation of our country. Currently, we are increasingly, we are increasing rights and weakening responsibilities, and it is leading our nation down a road towards moral and civic bankruptcy. If we are to raise our general welfare, we must strengthen our sense of individual responsibility for the welfare of others and the good of society at large. A second concern is that of the destruction of the trust in public figures and public officials. In Second Chronicles in the Old Testament, when Rehoban, the son of King Solomon sought for election or the vote of the people, the support of the people, he sought counsel from his father's advisors, and they gave him this wise counsel, something that we can all learn from. They spoke unto him, saying, "If thou be kind to these people and please them and speak good words to them, they will be thy servants forever." This is fresh in our minds after the recent ugliness of many election campaigns, but it is also familiar featuring television programs and in newspaper print. So much of public discourse and media coverage and entertainment seems to consist of content that will destroy trust in those persons and offices that should function as moral guides for young and old in our society. Many of the messages of some recent candidates seem to have intended to discredit the character of another candidate rather than to promote a serious discussion of the important issues on which the electorate should register their choices. Similarly, in so-called entertainment shows, we often see the authority figure portrayed as scheming, dishonest, and unworthy of trust. Discredit authority figures, whether public officials, teachers, ministers, or others, and where will it lead? It will encourage doubts about the laws and rules and principles they administer, and it will lead to skepticism about withdrawal from the ties that bind us together as a society, a family, or a private organization. We should all seek for the return to public discourse that is less divisive and more supportive and respectable of authority figures and the values that have built this wonderful nation. Each of you will be pioneers by adopting these ideals and teaching them to others by your example. This example should be lived in private, in your homes with your families, in public life, and especially here in these chambers as you conduct the affairs of the county each week. It is my prayer that God will give to each of us the courage to be pioneers in the 21st century, to seek His guidance and then to stand for what is right, even against the popular opinion, to make a difference for good in the lives of the many people that make up our Ventura County family. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second for our minutes. Seeing no objections, that passes. And now we'll go on to agenda review, time when we look at our agenda and see if there are any changes that are needed. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair and members of the board, here's a better day. There are no changes to the agenda other than whatever order you folks would like.
We did it, no.
Okay, well, I'm going to spoil that then and ask that we continue item 18. This is the item on the agricultural mitigation general plan update. Supervisor Flynn is not prepared yet to vote on that, so we're going to continue it to a time certain of May 2nd at 10:00 a.m.
Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for April eighteenth, two thousand and six. At this point, could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Michael.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. This morning, we're honored to have Bishop Tim Cooley with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints from my district in Thousand Oaks to come give us a moment of affirmation. So Bishop Cooley, if you'd like to come up to the podium there. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson Parks and supervisors, good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to be here today to share some thoughts. I've known Chairperson Parks for many years, and I thank her for her years of service to our community, the examples she's set, especially as a mom first and civic leader second. She reminds me of a quote by one of our church leaders that says, "No other success in life can compensate for failure in the home." Since I pray through one name, and that's not really allowed, I'll forego the formal prayer today and share some thoughts. Our church is known as a people that are pioneers who brought civilization out west. In an ever-changing world, each of us has the opportunity to be pioneers and bring changes for good to a people and a society that are seeking guidance. When making decisions and laws that govern our county, each of you has a responsibility to ask yourself, "Where will it lead?" May I mention and explore two areas of concern. I will use selected quotes from Elder Downage Oakes, an apostle in our church and a retired Supreme Court, state Supreme Court Justice. First, a concern about current overemphasis on rights and underemphasis on responsibilities. Where will it lead in our public lives? Quote, "No society is so strong that it can support continued increases in citizen rights while neglecting to foster comparable increases in citizen responsibilities and obligations. Yet our legal system continues to recognize new rights even as we increasingly ignore old responsibilities. For example, so-called no-fault divorces which give either spouse the right to dissolve a marriage at will have obscured the vital importance of responsibilities in marriage. Similarly, I believe it is a delusion to think that we can help children by defining and enforcing their rights. We do more for children by trying to reinforce the responsibilities of parents, natural or adoptive, even when those responsibilities are not legally enforceable and colloquial." The same principles apply in public life. We cannot raise our public well-being by adding to our inventory of individual rights. Civic responsibilities like honesty, self-reliance, participation in the democratic process, and devotion to the common good are essential to the governance and preservation of our country. Currently, we are increasingly, we are increasing rights and weakening responsibilities, and it is leading our nation down a road towards moral and civic bankruptcy. If we are to raise our general welfare, we must strengthen our sense of individual responsibility for the welfare of others and the good of society at large. A second concern is that of the destruction of the trust in public figures and public officials. In Second Chronicles in the Old Testament, when Rehoban, the son of King Solomon sought for election or the vote of the people, the support of the people, he sought counsel from his father's advisors, and they gave him this wise counsel, something that we can all learn from. They spoke unto him, saying, "If thou be kind to these people, and please them, and speak good words to them, they will be thy servants forever." This is fresh in our minds after the recent ugliness of many election campaigns, but is also familiar featuring television programs and in newspaper print. So much of public discourse and media coverage and entertainment seems to consist of content that will destroy trust in those persons and offices that should function as moral guides for young and old in our society. Many of the messages of some recent candidates seem to have intended to discredit the character of another candidate rather than to promote a serious discussion of the important issues on which the electorate should register their choices. Similarly, in so-called entertainment shows, we often see the authority figure portrayed as scheming, dishonest, and unworthy of trust. Discredit authority figures, whether public officials, teachers, ministers, or others, and where will it lead? It will encourage doubts about the laws and rules and principles they administer, and it will lead to skepticism about or withdrawal from the ties that bind us together as a society, a family, or a private organization. We should all seek for the return to public discourse that is less divisive and more supportive and respectable of authority figures and the values that have built this wonderful nation. Each of you will be pioneers by adopting these ideals and teaching them to others by your example. This example should be lived in private, in your homes with your families, in public life, and especially here in these chambers as you conduct the affairs of the county each week. It is my prayer that God will give to each of us the courage to be pioneers in the twenty-first century, to seek His guidance, and then to stand for what is right, even against the popular opinion, to make a difference for good in the lives of the many people that make up our Ventura County family. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second for our minutes. Seeing no objections, that passes. And now we'll go on to agenda review, time when we look at our agenda and see if there are any changes that are needed. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair and members of the board, we're but better day. There are no changes to the agenda other than whatever order you folks would like.
Pressured.
We did it. No. Okay, well, I'm going to spoil that then and ask that we continue item eighteen. This is the item on the Agricultural Mitigation General Plan update. Supervisor Flynn is not prepared yet to vote on that, so we're going to continue it to a time certain of May second at ten a.m. If there's no objections, and then I would also request, I have to leave early, going to a luncheon. Senator Feinstein's going to be in Santa Barbara, so I'm going to attend that. So I would ask that we move up item twenty-four, so I'll be able to discuss that one. That's regarding the Disabled Veteran Prisoner of War Park Pass Program, something I've been initiated. So I'd like to move that up to the nine-thirty after item nineteen. There's no objection. I'll go ahead and make that a motion then.
A second, please.
Motion and a second. No objection, then we'll put off eighteen till May second and move twenty-four up after nineteen. All right, seeing no objection to that, well, that agenda stands revised. And now we'll move on to our--
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I might, before, I don't know how long the bishop can stay, but I wanted to say thank you for those words. I think all of us talk about responsibility and personal responsibility a lot up here. I agree with you, and I hope that you continue to carry that message, that we all do, because personal responsibility seems to have fled from most of our senses of civic duty and personal responsibility. So thank you, I really appreciate those words today.
Madam Chair.
If I may say that your church, you have a new church on Gonzalez Road in the city of Oxnard, and it's a beautiful church. And what impresses me about it, the people who gathered together to build the church. I went to the groundbreaking. But when looking at the church, it has a very high steeple and temple, and everyone, when traveling on Gonzalez Road, that's the first building seen, that's the first steeple seen. It's like in other countries, especially in Mexico, where the church is seen first with the steeple. So I want to commend you and the people of your church for making that decision. I think churches ought to have the highest steeple in a city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, then, we are on to our consent agenda, items ten through fourteen. I have a motion for the consent agenda and a second. No objection, that passes. And I just want to compliment staff on item thirteen. We're consolidating three separate Oak Park service areas into one regarding our trash service areas, and I think any opportunity we have to consolidate them, because we have, I think, too many as it is, it makes it very complicated, so I compliment them for that. No objection, then the consent agenda does pass. All right. Moving right along, we can go to our regular agenda items, and I believe that will take us to item twenty-three. Oh, public comments. Excuse me. Our first public comment card is from Matt Carroll, and then after Matt will come Kristy Madden. Good morning, Mr. Carroll.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Matt Carroll, Chief Information Officer. I wanted to take a quick moment this morning and update your board on some recent family events that are going on in the GIS area and ask if you have any questions. You'll recall, a number of years ago, your board approved a subscription program for GIS data layers in the amount of $3,000, which allowed us to market our GIS data layers to both citizens and firms and the public sector to help offset some of the costs in this discretionary program. Right now, that GIS subscription program brings in about $100,000 a year, about 10% of the program budget, but about 20% of the discretionary budget of the program. In November of last year, the state attorney general issued an opinion that said GIS data, as maintained by an assessor within the county, is in fact public records and available under the Public Records Act. Upon learning of this, we confirmed or conferred with county council in that timeframe and determined were of the position that that did not apply to the county of Ventura for a couple of reasons. First, it's not maintained by the assessor in the county of Ventura. A second, there's some question if it's copyrightable, and copyrightable data, value-added data, is not subject to the Public Records Act. And then there were some revenue goals with the program that we did not want to depart from. This is a discretionary program on the part of your board, it's not a key component of the program, but it's not something we wanted to dismiss without some knowledge that it was required at that point in time. And finally, there are some specific exemptions in the Public Records Act for certain types of data, and much of that type of data, or many of those types of data, is R N G I S. Homeownership information for public safety officials, archeological dig information, homeland security information on core facilities and utilities and those such things are not available under the Public Records Act and are specifically exempted. Within the last month, several of, well, a couple of the larger counties, and most of the counties with GIS subscription programs took this position if it wasn't in the assessor's office. Well, within the last month, a couple of those counties, and most notably Los Angeles County, whose data is maintained by the assessor, has taken the position now that they are going to make their data available under the Public Records Act. We're working very closely with county council on this, and we expect an opinion to be imminent, but we did want to inform your board of these recent happenings, because we have received a couple of Public Records Acts, requests for GIS data in the recent past, in the recent number of weeks. And we've also learned that one of our local cities has just received a request from one of the local papers for access to our GIS data which they subscribe to. So again, we expect an opinion imminent from county council, and we'll move very quickly in support of that opinion if this applies to us one way or the other. We did want to let your board know, because of the monetary issues, there's very real potential for job loss if this subscription program does go away, the complexity of the issue with the exemptions that are in there and the specific data that's protected. And again, we'll move very quickly, and if there's any questions your board has, we expect that opinion imminently, but we didn't want your board to be surprised one way or the other.
Thank you for that information. It's nice to be able to provide that information to the public for free, but we do have to be concerned also regarding the cost to the county for that information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Our next speaker card then is Kristy Madden, followed by Albert Eggerd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's that time of year again, it's time for the corporate games, and we have a very small sampling of attendees for this year's festivities. Kathy, could you give that to the clerk of the board? I'm going to give you all copies of the corporate games event schedule, so you know where all of the county, over three hundred and fifty county employees will be. And I invite other employees in the county family who are going to be participating in the games, even though they don't have their shirts on, to stand up, because we have several of them here, and some event coordinators. Lori, raise your hand. Data Jack. The corporate games kick off tomorrow night at five-thirty in the Ventura Promenade near the Old Holiday Inn, and it is a spirit event. And for those of you who remember, the county did get the coveted Spirit Award, our first year that we participated in the corporate games. Participation has grown by leaps and bounds, and we continue to get sophisticated in how we manage this. It's a lot of work for an all-volunteer group, and I'm eternally grateful to all of my event coordinators and to Jesse Prater and Kathy Carone, who stayed till the wee hours packaging these T-shirts and brown mail envelopes. I have about two hundred T-shirts sitting up in the CEO's office in boxes that need to be distributed, about half of which have been paid for through the registration fees. So I'm making a plea to all of the people out there in the county family who have signed up for the corporate games, to contact our office, Jesse Prater or myself. I will be staying here at the county until about six o'clock tonight, for anybody who wants to come after hours, if they haven't paid their fee, to pick up their shirts. Again, I encourage everybody to come to the opening ceremonies tomorrow night at five-thirty. Kathy Carone has developed a little cheer, but before we do that, I want to say we brought some of our props. We didn't think it would be prudent to bring the darts and the swords and some of the other things, thinking that security might have a little bit of problem if we brought those. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Kathy, so we can say our county chair.
Okay. Bronze is good, silver is better, but let's be ever so bold and go for the gold! Woo!
I don't know about security, but our liability insurance is always on these people.
Yeah, John McColl's wife is going to be so happy. So the schedule, for those of you who don't have a hard copy, if you go on the management council's website, our latest newsletter has a copy of the schedule, and we hope to get it posted on the county's internet site as well for all employees. So with that, let's go beat Angie. Thank you.
Thank you. Go Ventura! Come on!
I think we want to recognize how good a job Kristy Madden does, coordinating all this stuff for everybody. A lot of joy in the county as a result of this, and Kristy has a lot to do with that.
Thank you. Our next speaker then is Albert Eggerd, followed by Connie Hall.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and the board of supervisors. This is a notice I'd like to read in the record for preservation. Two separate lawful citizens in America, U.S. citizen and state citizen. California Constitution of the State of California, eighteen forty-nine. We, the people of California, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom in order to secure its blessings, do establish this constitution. Article one, Declaration of Rights, section one. All men are by nature free and independent and have certain unalienable rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life, liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness. Before I mention this preamble in the first article and section of the State of California, eighteen forty-nine California Constitution, written for California state citizens, not U.S. citizens. The U.S. citizens were created under the U.S. Fourteenth Amendment in eighteen sixty-eight, and their State of California Constitution was forged in eighteen seventy-nine. Remember, the State of California, eighteen forty-nine Constitution to date is in full force and effect. California Government Code, section fifty-four, nine fifty, Declaration of Legislative Purpose. In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that public commissions, boards, councils, and other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so they may retain control over the instruments they have created. The foregoing case law is proof positive evidence that two separate citizens exist in America, and this county's administrative ongoing denial of this foregoing truth is at best a travesty of injustice and a mockery in violation of this state citizen's rights under the Constitution and colorable law. There is a citizenship of the United States and a citizenship of the state. Tashir versus Jordan. Here in the aforementioned case law is the California government proclaiming that there are lawfully indeed two separate citizens, and their rights under Constitution and colorable law vary considerably. State citizenship is a vested substantial property right, and the state has no power to divest or impair these rights. Thavot versus Kingsbury. Again, here in the aforementioned case law, the California government is claiming there exists a California state citizen, and proclaims as well, the State of California has no power to divest or impair that state citizen's right under Constitution and colorable law. Period. Are the rights of the state citizen the same as the rights of a U.S. citizen? There is a difference between privileges and immunities belonging to citizens of the United States as such and those belonging to citizens of each state as such. Ross Stratt versus People. Here, the United States government held, there are differences between the U.S. citizen and the state citizen with regards to the rights under the Constitutions and colorable law. Again, here we have the federal government's proclamation claiming indeed there does exist two separate and distinctly different citizens in America. The rights and privileges and immunities which the Fourteenth Amendment and section nineteen seventy-nine for its enforcement were designated to protect are such as belonging to citizens of the United States as such and not as a citizen of the state. Wade Lehigh versus Newhall. Again, the federal government clearly stating that there are two separate citizens in America. The governments of the United States and each of the states of the seven states are distinct from one another, the rights of the citizen under one may be quite different from those which he has under the other. Colgate versus Harvey.
And your time is up, then.
All right, I'll earmark it, and I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker then is Connie Hall, followed by Sandy Little.
Chair Parks and members of the board.
Good morning.
Good morning. My daughter Danielle is presently a patient at Hillmont Psychiatric Center. She was admitted on the fifty-one fifty by her case manager. I had asked for conservatorship for my daughter, because in the last two years, she had been hospitalized at Hillmont Psychiatric Center eleven times, four times since November of last year, and she has not been able to maintain housing on her own. I wrote a letter to the staff asking for conservatorship. I was granted a meeting with her team on Friday, this last Friday, at which time I was told that she did not qualify for conservatorship, and they were considering discharging her without finding housing for her, because they've exhausted all resources of housing for her. I'm going to leave with you the chronology that I gave to the psychiatric team at Hillmont Psychiatric Center, which shows all of her hospitalizations since April of two thousand and four, and all of her living situations since that time. And I would like to read to you the letter that I sent to the psychiatric staff prior to the meeting, and the one that I wrote after the meeting. This one is dated April thirteenth, appropriate psychiatric staff. With this letter and the supporting attached chronology of hospitalization and living situations for Danielle Hall, I am requesting that Danielle be placed under conservatorship of the county of Ventura. As indicated by the attached chronology, Danielle has a long history of hospitalization for her mental illness. It also shows that Danielle is unable to maintain suitable and continuous housing for a period longer than three months, and very often only for a few days or weeks. Danielle's inability to fit into group or even individual living situations is the result of bizarre, disruptive, chaotic, unhealthy behavior, driven by her ongoing depression, social anxiety, and I believe by frequent periods of mania. She does seek soulless enormity by sometimes falling into brief periods of use of street drugs. This only causes more delusions and psychotic behavior that leads to jail and hospitalization. Danielle longs for a stable home, friends, and a productive life. She is highly intelligent, has so much to offer peers in society as well. She has not been able to engage with the behavioral health system to achieve these goals. Since November two thousand and five, Danielle has had three different case managers. Danielle needs conservatorship and hospitalization, where she can be evaluated, treatment can proceed, or she can learn the social skills she needs to live and interact with others to achieve wellness and recovery and reentry into a more healthy, productive life. I believe that Danielle's history shows that without intervention and conservatorship, Danielle will continue to harm herself and the community, and continue to be a serious draw on the county's mental health resources, without there being any hope of long-term stabilization and recovery. I thank you for your close attentive consideration to this request. Sincerely, Connie Hall. After I met at the meeting with the team and Angela Childs, they again told me that the psychiatrist and staff at Hillmont did not believe that conservatorship was appropriate for Danielle, that she did not meet the criteria, and that because they had exhausted-- for Danielle, that she did not meet the criteria, and that because they had exhausted all resources of housing for her, they were planning on discharging her to find housing on her own and to seek treatment on her own. And after the meeting, I gave it a lot of thought. I was very depressed myself after hearing all of this and I thought about it a great deal and I wrote another letter to the staff. This one is dated April 16th. HPC staff. I have given a lot of thought to the discussions that arose at the meeting on Friday, April 14th, in your conference room. In retrospect, I think there is something currently out of place in the thinking that an individual with dual diagnosis, mental illness and drug addiction must first hit bottom before that person can actually become ready for further serious treatment. The false thinking here, it seems to me, is that there is an actual bottom for that person and that it will be known and the person will actually then ask for help and treatment. As evidenced to me by the homeless persons I see on the streets and pass in Ventura, it appears that bottom for some may be bottomless and that there may never be a reach for services. I believe that the new model being called for here today, as in the philosophy and practices envisioned by the Mental Health Services Act, is to reach out to or wrap services around those who seek help, not turn them away until they are hopelessly damaged by their inability to maintain even barely adequate living conditions or stay unappropriate.
Ms. Little. I'm afraid your time is up. Do you have a copy of those letters that you could submit to us?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Hall, if you have a moment too, I appreciate that you have the letters and I will certainly review them, but if you have a moment to go up to my office on the fourth floor and meet with my administrative assistant, Joyce Taylor, because you're a Port Rainee resident, we'll see what we can do to look into your concerns. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was my question.
Thank you. Our next public comment speaker then is Sandy Little followed by Armando Vasquez. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Sandy Little. I'm pastor of the North Oxnard United Methodist Church and I'm here today to speak about the Ventura County Children's Health Initiative. My job has taken me to the emergency room a few times late in the evening, 10, 10:30 recently, and it is filled with children and their families, children who are coughing and wheezing and whining. They clearly have colds and flu. If these were your children and my type of children, we would have taken them to the pediatrician during the day and gotten some medicine for them and they would all be home sleeping as you need to do. Extra rest is always required when children are sick, but they can't because they have no health coverage and it is a gauge of our civilization, the richness and health of our culture, how we take care of the poorest and the most vulnerable and the powerless and the voiceless, and these children are certainly that. Bishop mentioned that we are responsible for the safety and welfare of our community and I can't think of anybody who the community could be more responsible for than children who have no health coverage. The parents of these children love their children every bit as much as we love ours and they cannot afford health care. Seventeen counties have endorsed this initiative and I understand that one of the major concerns is cost for the county, whether the county can afford to do this. So we would like to urge that you at least endorse a pilot program that could be evaluated. We think that you will find that the cost of health care is actually reduced if you were to use this plan. I have two endorsements from my congregation and another congregation and we would just urge you to consider the needs of these children, these sick children, whose parents really are not able to afford to pay for their health care and that's probably because they're not making very much money doing jobs that none of us would like to do.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
If we could just point out that we do have a program that is expanding and I believe it's May 1st and I see Mr. Powers just walked in. It expands into Oxnard, an outreach program, and it will qualify all children that are not covered by insurance.
All children?
Yeah, all children are not covered by insurance with what we call our Cares for Kids Program if we can't get them into an insured program.
So at that point, all children will be covered by some kind of?
That's right. The program, the Cares for Kids Program that the county offers covers preventative care, creates a medical home and covers, it's called Cares for Kids, and it covers preventative care, creates a medical home for the children so they go for this, just the very thing you talked about, which is take them in so that they don't have to go to the emergency room. And we're trying to make sure that that outreach program goes well. We have a combination of Kaiser, there are three different insurance programs that we're getting these children enrolled in. If we can't get them enrolled in one of those and we put them into this Cares for Kids Program, which is through the county system.
Because I was under the impression that the programs that were set up could not receive all of the children in the county that aren't insured.
And that's, and we've been having trouble getting, we've been having trouble getting that information out, I think, to everybody in terms of that.
So the care is available, we just have to get the information to people?
That's right.
Perhaps the churches could help you do that.
And that covers, and that covers the hospitalization, preventative home, et cetera. Now, we're still working on the other side of it, which is the vision and dental insurance side of it. That's still what we're working out as a committee side of that, but there are, there is a substantial improvement over no insurance out there.
For everybody.
We'd like to make it even better, but there's a substantial improvement and that program in Oxnard does launch on May 1st, the outreach program in Oxnard. The pilot program's being expanded into Oxnard.
So at what point then do you think that all children would be able to receive this kind of care?
I think the issue is trying to get them, trying to get them all enrolled. The issue is going to be the outreach, the outreach and retention have been the big challenges with the program. Getting the people to come in, sign up, and then once they have signed up, for example, children that sign up for Medi-Cal or Healthy Families, oftentimes the parents don't re-sign them up after we get them signed up. And so we just have a tremendous amount of work we have to do in the outreach and enrollment side of this, of this program.
Yes.
It's a question of trying to get that, that aspect of this thing done. So we're trying to work hard with that and we'd certainly welcome your congregation's assistance, your outpatient enrollment also.
The county just authorized $400,000 for this outreach program to reach the 27, approximately 27,000 children that are currently eligible but not in the program. And then the additional 5,000 is what we're looking at.
The 5,000 that are not covered, yes.
The Kaiser program is available for. So yes, it would be wonderful to help in that outreach and get all our partners working. Thank you for your comments this morning. Our next speaker is Armando Vasquez followed by Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Democracy is great. Powerful words of wisdom by people that preceded me. However, democracy requires a voice, a literal voice, a figurative voice, a societal voice. And the people that Dr. DeRiz and I work with, generally speaking, do not have a voice. And a population that specifically is voiceless is the young Chicana Latinas that we just had the privilege of working with through this last Keys program. I've got a couple of things for the supervisors and Mr. Johnson, forgive me, I can also provide it to you if you would like it. This is an anthology, and I'll hand it to, it's an anthology of writings by these young ladies that at one time looked at us with blank stares, inquisitive eyes, and lost expressions, and they were able to put together an incredible moving anthology of poems. And it addresses their pain, their quest for societal involvement, all the things that we need of young people to be contributing members of our society. I want to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that there is not one penny by the county being provided to a secular program that provides intervention for gang kids, at-risk kids. This isn't a moral issue. It's an issue that's at our doorsteps and we have, you know, two or three options. We can put them in jail, as we tend to seem to want to do. We can ignore them or we can begin to address them in a way that will make them contributing members of this society. I guarantee you that if you read the first two poems, these ladies that write these two poems have been transformed. They will go on to college, they will become community people, they will become leaders in our community, and they will make our community better by their participation in this anthology. So what I want to do is share secrets and keys to the heart by these youth. We also want to share some of the writings that some professional people put together in opposition of the injunction that looks like maybe the civil gang injunction that may be coming to the South Side. And finally, I also want to share our latest art project by a Bangladeshi gentleman that is currently being featured at Cafe Ane, his name is Mahmoud Riazi. And I would love to share these with you folks in, with the hopes of understanding that we've got to invest in this one particular segment of our community that is being neglected completely. Please review and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and thank you for your efforts too. Our last public comments card is from Carol Dean Williams.
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident of Ventura, and I want to thank the bishop for staying. That shows a great deal of responsibility to me and since I fulfill my responsibility every Tuesday to exercise my First Amendment right, I want to share you, I want to share with you, listening in on the interview, and since we live in a fishbowl down here, I want to share with you the interview between your county council and the North Carolina barb attorney for theft. The barb attorney, quote, "I stole my partner's money and was disbarred, but I can practice law in California." Mr. Claybaum, "No problem. I can always use another thief in the office. Just don't tell the VA and the sheriff." Well, it said he was fired. Mr. Claybaum, "I'm giving you an award. You can turn it on which end to use it. It's not a napkin though." "It's not a napkin." "Yeah, Mr. Claybaum, you set me up in the election division too." Yep, "It's all on record and I'm bringing the record. Look at that snicker. We can always use another thief." Now, this is the lawyer for the board. Well, I want to share one of my predictions. This was written in 2000 as I monitored the events that was taking place, and these homonyms really cause problems. But it's hail, H-A-I-L. Look at Rebecca, she's over there flipping the switch. It's hail, H-A-I-L, and this is dedicated to Honest John Flynn. Hail hail to our own county supervisor Flynn, forever duck Big Bad John against political sin. This was in 2000. Let this proclamation sound forth countywide. Big Bad John is after your hide. Aldication, Aldication reported against Little Dick by that Big Bad John Flynn, that Carol Dean Williams knows his adopted supervisor committed no sin. Free, free, made way bigger than Big King Clyde, that Big Bad John rushed Little Dick after the mayor dogged the closing song. Animated, animated, cried out Ms. Connie. Oh yes, Big Bad John looked like Clyde, the other half of Bonnie. He shoved me, he pushed me, he cast me aside. Oh, Big Bad John, you are not diggy size. Hail hail to our own county supervisor Flynn, so for next election, I want you to fight like Big Bad John once again. And you know, Mr. Flynn said he didn't have one friend in the county council's office. Well, that's an award. That's an award not to have one friend in the county council's office. Fired, fired this attorney that was hired by Mr. Claybaum, full knowing well that he stole his partner's money and was disbanned from North Carolina to practice law. Hired him and then had to ride him and fire him. I reserve my time for other items.
You have 50 seconds left. Actually, our last public comment speaker is Joseph O'Neil. Good morning, Mr. O'Neil.
Good morning, Ms. Powers. And good morning, supervisors. And I want to say good morning to my good friend, Mr. Claybaum. I've known him for a couple of years and he's more than a couple of years. He's an excellent attorney and maintains the tradition of Mr. C., who's present as well. So I just ask that you give any prior speaker the words, the appropriate value. I'm here today to talk about the LNG hearing that's going on today. In Oxnard, the LNG hearings are public hearings put on by the state lands commission that is addressing the issue of the regasification plant in Oxnard. Whether or not you think it's good or whether or not you think it's bad or it's essential is beside the point. The Oxnard City Council has addressed the fact that there are certain safety issues and certain environmental concerns that many of us have about this. And I'm only here today to ask that we take a stand, right or wrong, I don't care, we take a stand because the silence tends to be overwhelming from not only the city but also the county in terms of whether or not this be a good thing for us to do. BHP Billiton is the 800-pound gorilla, literally, who will come into our neighborhood and be here for many years. What we know about them, what we know about the experimental process, what we know about this plant is somewhat minimal. I'm just asking that we consider the fact that this is coming into our region and whether or not we're supervisor districts here or here or whatever. This is a region that affects Ventura County all throughout, whether or not it be safe, whether or not it be practical, whether or not it be appropriate. The hearings are going on today. It would be nice if we had some elected representatives to appear down there. This is basically a public concern in a public meeting about whether or not it's appropriate for our county, so I was going to ask the supervisors, as well as everybody in this county, to take a stand on this very important issue and consider yourself invited to appear tonight. Thank you very much. Mr. Claybaum, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment portion of our agenda. And we do have a few minutes before we go to our 9:30 and following the agenda, we'll go to Board Comments. Supervisor Michaels, would you like to go first?
Thank you. I have no adjournments today, which is always nice, and I really have no comments other than the fact that you will notice on next week's agenda that I will be out all day. I will be in Washington DC on behalf of Naval Base Ventura County with a contingent of local electeds and local business people who will be talking to the CNO all the way down and then across the spectrum of the Coast Guard, the Air Force, the Air National Guard, and of course, some of our congressional members lobbying on behalf of some Milcons that the base needs, that they are supporting, and perhaps the opportunity to bring new business to the base in terms of the Coast Guard moving several units in and their UAV program, which I understand they don't call it UAV anymore, but... UAV program, which I understand they don't call it UAV anymore, but it's all good news for Naval Base Ventura County, so I will be in Washington the first three days of next week. I'm sorry I will miss the meeting, but I feel this is a pretty important trip. If we can, so to speak, snag the Coast Guard a bunch of new units, it will be very, very healthy for the Navy base. So that's my only comment, and I wish me luck, because we really want to see the deep-water program come here.
Me, too, wish you luck. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd also like to note that there was a front-page story in the Sunday Star about, that relates to our harbor and what was, what's happening with Channel Islands Beach District. Two things that were of note, I think, in there. One is that the water rates are quite a bit higher for our harbor tenants than they would be in other kind of water districts, and two, the issue of whether water rates that Ventura County taxpayers pay for our harbor district's services there are then turning around and being used to sue Ventura County taxpayers. And so I just have four quick questions. I don't want to spend a lot of time on, absorb an amount of time on harbor issues, but just four quick questions that I'd like a combination of our CEO and our county council to respond to. One, in your opinion, was that illegal use of the fees, the water rate fees and sewer fees that we're paying in? Two, was the vote done in a legal manner by the Channel Islands Beach District? Three, what are the options we could consider if, in fact, your report indicates there's a problem? What are the options that we could consider about that? And four, do we have any options that we can consider about the whole issue of the high water rates relative to the other options, the other ways that we could get that? So anyway, if at some point in time, at your convenience, the county council and the CEO could get together and report back, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, would you like to go next with your board comment?
Sure, thank you, and good morning. I don't have just brief comments, because I know we've got a packed agenda this morning. I'd like to submit this list for adjournment memory of folks in my district, and I'd also like to just take a moment to give kudos, an applause, and congratulations, and appreciation to the treasurer tax collector, and an outstanding job well done by all of his staff in this last property tax payment cycle. It's been reported that there were certainly an aggressive, not aggressive, but a very experienced and well-prepared staff that did an outstanding job in collecting the property tax payments, and that is certainly to the benefit of the county, but the benefit to all of the services that the county provides to our residents, and representing more than 4,000 more payments than the previous record of last year, a better collection rate, and overall, they functioned exceptionally well in doing the job that they're challenged to do, and as always, doing it with a small but mighty staff. So congratulations to Mr. Matheny and his team and his staff. Outstanding job, appreciate the work. And that's all I'll have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On the issue raised by Supervisor Bennett, I think that we need to be very concerned that it could impact lots of districts and lots of areas, and it could impact, if we were to go to Oxnard for water for the harbor, it could impact the Navy base as far as the expense of water, if we were to let go of it. It could impact the city of Port Wayneimi. The three entities, especially the city of Wayneimi, Port Wayneimi, and the city and the Community Service District in Channel Islands, have a rather advanced water system using the advanced technology, and of course, that costs money to do that. So I would urge the board to move with caution on the issue raised by Supervisor Bennett. I don't know if I can, and Madam Chair, I'd like the board to adjourn in memory of the people on my list that I'll submit to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flynn. I would just comment that today is voting day in one little city in our county, Santa Paula, and it'll be, it's been an incredible campaign watching it from the papers, and otherwise, where this is three-quarters of a million dollars or something's being spent in a proposal for a development in Adams Canyon, and it'll be interesting to see the outcome while I'll be watching. With that, I'd ask the board to close in a name, in memory of the people on my list, and we'll move on then to our next item. It's a 9:30 time certain, and I see we have a lot of people here, and Supervisor Long, you're going to be joining us, will you?
I am, thank you, and it is a pleasure to do it, and I would invite Nancy to please step forward when you, so that we can talk glowingly about your years of service to Ventura County. The first thing I would say in preparing this resolution to acknowledge Nancy Penz in her 34 years of dedicated service to our county, and I see that her present boss and past bosses and all of the staff are here, and that really represents that, the work that you've done all these years has been so exemplary. The key part, I see, is that you've been the key party planner, and that's very important to do. That's very, very important to do. Always appreciated. But Nancy started her employment with our county in 1968. She was a mere babe. She came in and, starting in the mental health department, promoting in positions to the chief administrative office, the treasurer tax collector, and in 84 became a legal secretary in the county council's office. And two years later, she was promoted to supervisor of all legal secretaries and all the support staff in the county council's office. And in that office, was able to provide a reputation that was significant in the part of the quality of the work that was produced by the support staff, the effectiveness of the work produced by the county council's office, and for 20 years, Nancy led the way for the county council support staff members, encouraging them and guiding them. And I think those are important words whenever you have someone who supervises a support staff that really has important work to perform for the county, but very technical work, very, well, you know, herding cats of lawyers is always a challenge, but.
No offense, though.
And Nancy did that very well. Her work ethic, her work ethic inspired, inspired her to devote every possible effort to the successful completion of all the tasks that she was challenged with, and we know that, because I know, I've seen her, early mornings, late evenings, weekends, whatever was required to get the job done, and she really put her work ethic and efforts into it. Nancy's ethical and fair treatment of others has inspired a spirit of camaraderie and teamwork in the office, has earned her reputation as reliable and helpful partner with the lawyers and with the support staff and the administrative team. She's renowned for her skills at organizing, presenting special events, there's that party planner.
That's right.
And doing it all, though, in very good taste, and in celebration of, celebrating the team that works in the county council's office, whether it's promotional celebrations, birthdays, holidays, it's important to do that, to appreciate your peers and to appreciate one another. Nancy's legacy for county council staff and all of us is her shining example of what we can accomplish when we commit ourselves to achieving excellence, and that truly has been your commitment all of these years. And so we would like to really thank you for your 34-plus years of your dedicated and exemplary service, and that service was certainly to the county council's office, but to all of the residents of Ventura County, because we represent them, and through the good work you do, you represent them. We really wish you lots of wonderful retirement, health and happiness, and all the good things that come with a much-deserved retirement, and I know where I'll see you probably more often than not, and we'll share that another time. I'd like to step down and present this to you.
At the hall.
That's right, at the hall. Oh, let me see, a golf course and other things. So I'd like to step down, present this on behalf of the board, but I know that Mr. Claybaum would like to say a few words, too.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are a very few special people who can be both the glue that helps to hold an organization together, and the social lubricant that helps everyone to get along and work to accomplish a common goal, and Nancy is one of those very special people. The scope of her responsibilities can be illustrated by some of the things that she's done over the years. She has trained most of our legal secretaries, she has implemented almost all of our software systems, she has wrestled with our budget, and she has planned and put on retirement and other social events, and has even scavenged furniture from surplus because we couldn't afford new. Nancy, your dedication and commitment to our office have been remarkable and an example to all of us. We very much appreciate what you have done, and we wish you all the best in the future, and we're most grateful for you coming back to help us part-time in the transition. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm very happy to do it. I just wanted to say a few words, I guess if I turn around, you can hear me, but I am so grateful that all of you came, all my coworkers are here, my friends and my family. Retirement is probably been the most difficult decision I've ever had to make, and I can't tell you how many times people have said to me, "Why do you cry whenever you talk about retiring?" And that's how I'm feeling right now. I have thoroughly enjoyed all my years at the county. When I started in mental health services back in 1968, they hired me as a stenographer when they used to do those kinds of things, and my monthly salary was $403 a month. So I hung in there for those 34 years, and I have had the privilege of working with some very influential, very well-known people in the county. When I went to the, when I was at the healthcare agency, I worked with Dr. Sarah Miller, who was the agency director there. When I was in the CEO's office, Monty Lish was the CEO when I came in. And then I worked with Richard Wittenberg, and I also, that's when I first got to know Johnny Johnston, because he was the director of the Support Services Agency when I first came there. And in my time with the county council, I've had the privilege of working with four different county councils, Dorothy Schechter, Jim McBride, Frank Skey, and now Noel Claybaum. I can tell you that working in the county council's office has been an absolute privilege. I'm fortunate to say that I love going to work at my job. The people that I work with are extremely skilled, very professional, very hardworking, and I'm proud to say that I have spent 22 years with these people who not only are my coworkers, but have come to be my friends and family, and we've shared a lot of times, some good, some not so good, but the memories are wonderful. I feel like I've learned so much, I've been very challenged, and I've always been extremely proud to say that I work for the county of Ventura. I think that the employees here are very dedicated, hard-working people who really care about serving the county, and I'm honored to say that I have been a part of that all these years. So thank you all for coming to recognize me. I brought my Kleenex, because I am really sad, but I can't give up so easy, so I'm going to come back and work part-time for a while, and transition into it a little bit. Thank you so very much for coming to honor me, and I thank you very much for all your kind words.
Nancy, one of the influential people that she met was Steve Penza while she was here. He's not here listening to me. Right, I don't think he's hearing it, though. Right. I said, Nancy, one of the influential people whose paths you crossed were the guy named Steve Penza.
Yes.
Right. Nice to see you, Steve.
County life, it was wonderful to hear all that. Thank you very much. Our next 9:30 item is on Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I know Ted Myers is here, but you realize, seeing that to combat something as bad as child abuse takes an incredible team and a partnership that we have put in place to be as effective as possible. This is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors proclaiming April 2006 Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it reads, "Whereas child abuse is a social problem that impacts every community and state in the nation, and affects growth, development of children from every ethnic and socioeconomic group, and whereas the seriousness of the problem is evidenced by growing numbers of families affected and the severity of the cases reported, and whereas early detection, intervention, and treatment are critical to maintain the integrity of the family, and whereas child abuse prevention volunteers and professionals continue to assist families to decrease the incidence of child abuse through prevention and treatment programs and coordinate services throughout Ventura County, and whereas there is a need to increase public awareness, promote and support intervention and prevention programs, and acknowledge the efforts and dedication of volunteers and professionals committed to the protection and enhancement of child life. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors proclaims April 2006 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the county of Ventura, and encourages all residents to actively participate in bringing an end to child abuse in our community, and be it further resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors commends the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, Ventura County Behavioral Health, Ventura County Public Health, Ventura County Human Services Agency, all law enforcement, and all outstanding volunteers and professionals who work on behalf of children in crisis and need." So I'm going to bring this down to you, and Mr. Myers, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. Members of the board, Mr. Johnston, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, as well as a number of other months. It is not a topic that we like to think about very much. We don't want child abuse to be happening. Nationwide, over 50,000 reports of child abuse and neglect happen per week, and Judy Rivera is here to tell us a little bit more about what's happening in Ventura County. But I want to say that although my agency works hard to ameliorate the effects of child abuse once it's already happened, we also work hard and partner with the nonprofit community, faith community, education, our other county partners, because we all are committed to preventing it before it happens. When you see these egregious cases that come up to the national press, like just recently on sexual abuse, those are fairly rare, and they've been fairly rare, they're not as bad in Ventura County as they used to be. They used to be much worse in physical abuse and sexual abuse, and part of the reason, I think, is because we have a lot of committed people with, working together for early detection and prevention. So those family problems that typically happen, that grow into something more, and if we can intervene early, and we're sensitive to that, we can kind of get over that barrier of not wanting to interfere, that's their life or whatever, but work with people so that they are not on the defensive, that they want to work with us in the best interests of their children, then we have a chance. And we have so much good work going around in the county that is not recognized because it's, it hasn't risen to that crisis level, and we tend to always look at the big crises, and this is an opportunity for us to give recognition to those who are helping to prevent it early on. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Judy Rivera.
Hi, thank you, Ted.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Parks, Mr. Johnston. We know that nationally, April is one month out of the year that child abuse prevention is recognized, but I want to mention that every month is Child Abuse Prevention Month for the Human Services Agency. We take our work very seriously and are passionate about the need to prevent child abuse and neglect. We're dedicated to protecting families and empowering them to take care of their children as best as they can. We work tirelessly to identify those situations where abuse and neglect might be happening, and we intervene on those as appropriate. And I also think it's important to remind everybody that child abuse and neglect can occur in any family, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their culture, or their ethnicity, or their religious beliefs. It's everywhere, and so our, our work touches the lives of everybody across the county. Safe children and healthy families are a shared responsibility, and indeed, it does take a village to do that, and so today I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize two partners in particular who have worked very, very closely with the Human Services Agency in helping us. have worked very, very closely with the Human Services Agency in helping us to prevent child abuse. The first person I want to recognize is Melanie Roy. Melanie is the Chief of Children's Services for Behavioral Health, but I think you have a different title now, right? Division Manager for Behavioral Health Children's Services. Melanie and I have known each other for a long time, but in particular, over the last two years, she and I have partnered on providing the services to our children that is so much needed. And through Melanie's leadership and through her creativity, she has been able to bring unprecedented mental health services to the families and children that we serve. She has been very proactive in that effort and I believe firmly that bringing those services into these families immediately, or almost immediately, directly impacts the recurrence of abuse and that early intervention, and their presence in the community affects the prevention of child abuse. So I'd want you to stand in for us to recognize you and again, thank you for all the work that you've done with us in our department. The next person I want to recognize is Mr. David Freeland. David is the chairperson for the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families and Communities. The Partnership for Safe Families and Communities and Kids and Families Together, he actually wears two hats. They both work with us, again, to provide the services that are needed to impact these families and to prevent further abuse and neglect. I want to take this moment to mention that the, because it's National Child Abuse Prevention Month, the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities is hosting an annual conference and it's bringing in internationally renowned experts to share their best practices in stemming the causes and effects of child abuse and neglect, as well as abuse across the lifespan. That conference will take place in our county on April 26th. And I actually have brought a couple of flyers for all of you so that you can take a look at it and make sure that, if you want to sign up for that. So David, please stand and be recognized by the board for your help. So Ted talked a little bit about the statistics that go along with child abuse and neglect and, and you know, while they are not always pleasant to, to recognize that that does exist, it is important for us to know that they do exist in our county. We have a total population of 216,480 youth children in our county. Only 4.8% of those kids were referred for child abuse and neglect. That, you know, there's, there's two sides to that story. It, you know, we're hoping to stem child abuse and neglect, but we know that it's still happening. So we have to pay close attention, close attention to those 4.8%. We had about 10,440 children who were referred for investigation and 12% of those were actually investigated in 2004. So we like to think that those investigations resulted in some early intervention and ultimately prevention of child abuse for those kids. And again, I believe that our presence in the community impacts child abuse. So we are present in the community. I think we are doing tremendous work. We strengthen families and protect kids and we know that we don't do that alone, that it takes a village to do that. And we have strong partners who help us to do that and we are thankful to them because with them, we can make our community safe and supportive for all families and for all children. So thank you for your attention and for your efforts toward prevention.
And that 4.8% is too much.
It is.
So turn to us if what we can do to help bring that to zero, does what we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy, would you like to say something?
Yeah. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Judy Rivera and the Adult Child and Family Services for their amazing partnership with us. Judy's 100% right in saying that it does take a village and it's these collaborations that really assure that children's needs are met in this county. I also want to say that I'm an incredibly lucky person because I get up every day and I do the job that I'm passionate about. And in the back row there, in the last couple back rows are people from the Child Welfare subsystem, who are the people in my division who work with these children, provide mental health services, and I want to recognize them too because they're the people right on the line that are actually face-to-face with these children and families. The children are inspirations to us. If you read their case histories, they have a tremendous amount of resiliency and they're survivors. And it's their stories that fire us and provide the impetus for the work that we do. And it's incredible work and it's, it's fulfilling work. The other thing I want to say, just briefly, is that we are transforming the system. It's a great time in Ventura County and I hope you can see appreciation for that because we're kinda standing on the history of children's system of care that started in the late eighties, early nineties. And right now, I think we're on the cusp of really beginning to provide preventative and early intervention services. And that is truly transforming and that will really affect great change in this county for the children. So I want to thank everybody for their partnerships and how privileged I am to be here. Thank you.
And Chair? Could we also ask the people that are in her department to stand so we can tell who they are back there?
Just quickly, Prevent Child Abuse, Child Abuse California came up with a campaign a year or so ago that it only takes a moment. So, and they have the blue wristbands. So I've given them to the clerk of the board. And I'll be back this afternoon to make sure that everybody is wearing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Madam Chair. Yes.
Just, I'd like to thank you. You, you work with in this, in this particular arena, the most vulnerable and a job I could not do. I could not read even a case file on it without having all kinds of emotions that would rage, go from rage to anger to just sadness, what we do to our children unfortunately. So I thank you all for what you do. You're very courageous. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett.
If I could also, we know we have a crisis in terms of foster families in Ventura County and the better job we do with child abuse prevention, the fewer foster children we will end up having in the long run. So it's far better for us to work on the front end than it is for us to work on the, on the back end. So thank you very much for your agreement.
Supervisor Michaels.
Yeah, I think it's a testimony to the quality of the work that's done that we only have way too much, 4.8%. But the pressures today on parents and put on everyone by our society and the kind of, excuse me, back to the opening comments this morning, the, the lack of instilled sense of responsibility in some people has really put a lot of children at risk. And the sad thing is, no one wants to talk about it and everybody assumes that it's the, you know, the working poor, or maybe one of the ethnicities that lives in our county and that's simply not true. Some of our most affluent families have issues. And most of it, I believe, is brought on by pressure. Pressure to succeed, pressure to be the best, pressure to make tons of money so you can have all the toys while losing sight of the best toy around, which is your own child, to watch them grow up and to become, you know, productive adults. So I, I appreciate what you do. I'm, I'm like Supervisor Long, I couldn't do it. I would be in tears 24/7. But I appreciate that there are some of you who can do it and who take pride and compassion in doing the job. So my heart goes out to you. Thank you very much. And hopefully, next year's report will be less reported abuses and every year, we can continue to drop the number that are recorded. But thank you for your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much. And it, it's true. It, it doesn't go by any, you know, it doesn't affect just one segment of society. I had the Coalition Against Family Violence in my office who said, "Actually, it's areas out in my district that have more vi, family violence." And we're seeing where you would expect it to be in a different district, but it doesn't. It crosses all, all different districts and all different people and demographics. So thank you so much for your hard work. I really appreciate it. We'll move on now to our next item. Oh. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We have a 50 seconds left for Carol Dean Williams. Can you use them all now, Mr.
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident. I've had the misfortune of witnessing child abuse, very severe, and I called that department and the response was, "It depends on who you are when you report child abuse." I've had to call them three separate times. And soon as I said, "Carol Dean Williams," child abuse no longer meant anything. So I want to go on record for this department to explain this. I still have the evidence. No, you won't ask them. You won't ask them to explain, but you're busy, Nate. April is Child Abuse Month, but you won't explain.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you. And now, our next item on the agenda is the item 17, the oral presentation by our CEO. But because we have, I believe, several people here on item number 19, which is the Social Host Ordinance, I'd like to go to that now, if that's okay. This is regarding the adoption of, this is the second reading, as I understand, of the adoption of the ordinance on this, of the Social Host Ordinance. And do I have some speaker cards on this? On item 19? Not yet. That's correct. Okay. Would you like to come speak, please?
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Suzy Watkins, County Executive Office. This is the second hearing of the Social Host Ordinance. We presented the proposed ordinance to your board on April 4th, 2006. County Council has prepared a summary of the proposed ordinance for publication by the clerk of the board as required by the government code. We are recommending your board pass and adopt the subject ordinance and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have no questions. I think we have discussed this pretty well and have great support on the board on this matter. Supervisor Michaels and Supervisor Long. Supervisor Long?
Thank you. I would like to put the motion on the, on the dais for the final adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
And if I might, just to, again, say some words to, to thank the good work that's been done on this by all those who, who really brought this together, the coalition at the local level and then certainly internally, the work that's been done. The goal now is to move it on and to get the cities to adopt with Ojai and Fillmore leading the way. I encourage all the cities, and I know they're, they're all looking at it and trying to move ahead. This, this really does, and it's been said before, this really is to change the mindset, to really remove what might have been considered by some as a rite of passage. And to really look at using this as a tool for the community, not just for law enforcement, but certainly another wonderful tool for law enforcement also. But the community needs to adopt this and they need to adopt this, starting in the home. And we can't, we really can't, as we know from history, arrest away this problem. That's not the solution. We have to really work with our parents and our adults and, and our, our youth to really get them to engage in responsible act, responsible actions, and get them to understand that the, the things they do when they're underage can live with them a lifetime. There's clear statistics that as 15-year-old, if you start drinking, that you really have a high propensity to be on a path to have alcoholism, be a significant part of your life, all of your life, as a behavioral problem. So I'm very pleased that we've been able to bring this forward, that the board is supportive. I think we've got good tools in here for responsibility, both for the adults and for the youth. So very, very pleased to have it forward.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I already made some comments last time about the value of the ordinance, so I won't repeat those. I just do think this is really a great moment for us to take it to the next level. And so I really welcome everybody. The Ojai contingent here is, is here again, Councilwoman Hanstead from Ojai. So I'd just like to offer that I'd be willing, and I'm sure you guys are too, to go to cities and talk to them because the value of this ordinance is gonna be if we actually do it countywide. So there is no place for the parties to move to. If anybody has a network about finding out where you can and can't do this, it'll be the young people. And so if we can get this thing to move countywide, I certainly want to offer my assistance in joining you guys in this great effort to try to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank both of you for bringing this forward too. Supervisor Michaels?
I was just gonna say the same thing. You know, thank you for bringing it forward and for all your work. Thank you to Jeff for listening to some of my concerns and helping me work through the issues that I had with it in the beginning. I'm very, very, very comfortable with it and, and I fully understand the purpose of it. It will be a wonderful thing if all 10 cities now will adopt it. And I believe that it's a very clear statement to the young people that it's not okay to overdo and it's very, very dangerous. You know, I used to tell my kids, "Two young men, you know, don't do it. I love you and I don't want to have to cry over your coffin." And I think if more parents would say that to their children, we'd have a little bit less. It was not acceptable behavior. And, you know, I probably overdid it, but they grew up to be very responsible men. And so I think that it, with the help of this, it teaches parents as well as the young people that it's not okay. It's just not acceptable behavior. So I appreciate all the, the work that you did do and I think one of the most important parts of this is the fact that the young people will also be held accountable. If they make the mistake without the help of their parents or the adult, then they're gonna do the payback. And I think that's what we need to be teaching young people today. So thank you all very, very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. And look at what these kind of, you know, alcohol and, and parties and teens can lead to, a lot of societal ills from tragic car accidents to sexual assaults and Supervisor Long mentioned too, you know, this is a way to help prevent them from becoming adults that do the same thing. I look forward to seeing what kind of numbers we have because as we have heard, there have been, you know, hundreds of these kinds of parties, if this actually is gonna have an effect to deter these parties from occurring, absolutely encourage the other cities. And just really want to thank the people that helped put this together with the county, Chief Executive Office, Suzy Watkins. I know Matthew Broman was also involved and Chief Dean. So really much appreciate the work that everyone did in putting this together and look forward to the success of it. With that, we have a motion and a second and seeing no objections, then that does pass. Our next item on the agenda then, we'll go. Okay, I can do either one. Then let's go ahead and move forward on, this will be item regarding the Parks, item 24. This is regarding a request to put, the California State Park System has a park pass for veterans, disabled veterans, veterans prisoner of war, and this will be able to extend that to our county park systems. Mr. Grossgold?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, I'm Paul Grossgold, Director of General Services Agency. And I'm happy to be here this morning to recommend approval for the acceptance of the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Disabled Veteran Prisoner of War Pass Program at Ventura County Operated Campgrounds. On January 24th of this year, your board approved GSA Parks Department's Rent Fee and Insurance Schedule A. Interest was expressed at that time by the chair in the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Disabled Veteran Prisoner of War Pass Program. GSA was asked to research that program and return with a recommendation. That program entitles disabled veterans and former prisoners of war to participate in the state program by paying a one-time fee of $3.50. The holder of the pass may then use state park facilities at no charge. As envisioned, if approved, anyone in possession of a state pass and valid, valid identification would be given access to Ventura County campgrounds at no charge. Only fees would be affected. All other provisions and restrictions in place for the use of Ventura County campgrounds, such as time of stay limitations, would remain in effect. If approved, GSA will provide an annual report to the county executive officer regarding the use and costs associated with the program for potential reimbursement of fees waived to the Parks Enterprise Fund. On March 13th, On March 13th, this waiver program was reviewed by the Parks Advisory Commission, which was in full support of approval. In closing, GSA recommends that your board approve this program, authorize the County Executive Officer to reimburse fees waived from the general fund to the Parks Enterprise Fund, and approve the resolution to amend the Rent Fee and Insurance Schedule A for Ventura County Parks. Subject to your questions, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels?
If I understand this correctly, we have made the wonderful leap not to recreate the program. We're just going to accept the state pass with.
That's correct.
Valid identification.
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think it's the right thing to do, first of all. But the fact that we can set up a program that doesn't require another identification and another set of issues to deal with, just merely accept the state pass, I think is marvelous, and I thank you for that. I think it is a good thing to do. Do we have an estimate? I didn't find it in here. Do we have any idea what we think this is going to?
Well, we did, based on the current usage in the state program, which is just under 1%, we extrapolated that to be roughly $11,000 that it would cost us. And it really depends on how quickly the word gets out and how many veterans, disabled veterans and former POWs use the system. Our area does have, I think, a higher percentage of veterans. So we may get, we may see more usage in Ventura County than statewide. It's hard to know, but we will monitor that and continue to get the CEO that information.
Thank you very much.
And I would also think that state parks might have a little bit more appeal for people that are traveling in their RVs than necessarily coming to our, our county parks. But I look forward to also seeing the results of this. And I appreciate you bringing this forward. It's something I've been looking at for probably a year or so that was brought to my office through some disabled veterans. So I'm glad to see this move forward. Thank you very much.
Second?
Motion and a second, seeing no objections, and that does pass. Thank you very much for the report.
Good work.
And then our, our next item now is our, Johnny Johnston's going to give us a presentation on what we can look forward to in our budget. Mr. Dursey, I hope you have a PowerPoint.
We'll try to make this as painless and as quick as possible. The purpose of this this morning, I guess, could be classified somewhere between education and reminders. We are now entering into the budget cycle, and we will have a preliminary budget for your board in May, and you'll have your hearings in June. Couple of things that have come up that I thought maybe we should just touch on is so everybody remembers how we got where we are and where we've been and where we hope not to go back to. One, the, there was an article in the paper about assessed values growing, which is good news. But like everything, there's two sides to it. The good news is, is that the assessed value has gone up, which means that the local governments have a better source of income to maintain services. The unfortunate part is, is that it's unseasonably high, which means that it will not be sustained. And if one tends to raise their standard of living based not on their recurring income, but on some bonus or a rich aunt dying and leaving them money, they will quickly find themselves back where they were before, which is, you know, living beyond their means. So I'm going to run through just a few numbers just to kind of set the table as we go into the budget process. The second reason for thinking this is worth talking about today is our assessor raised a concern over the monies that we recommended last month being used in a certain way and the explanation for some of those monies, which are one-time that came to you. The question was when he said that we, the revenues from property tax were not expected to be as high. So I just want to kind of touch on how we go about that and how that affects the budget process. I'm going to talk about this with the executive committee, all your agency and department heads too, because as the assessor pointed out to me, it's important that we maintain credibility on the process. And so we don't want anybody to think anybody's hiding the ball. So I decided the best place to do this is here in the boardroom and over the internet. We start out with, let's see if I can, let me push this button. Okay. We want to, this, this should be the first thing we talk about. Our goal is fiscal stability. And fiscal stability requires a long-term approach. If we only look at it day-to-day, we can get ourselves into trouble. But the main goal as far as service delivery is to maintain current service levels. And we have achieved that this year and last. The one issue that maybe is a little, kind of a cloud on the horizon is that we have a policy in this county that says that when we set programs up based on money that your board doesn't control, such as federal grants, when the federal grant goes away, the policy is the program has to go away. Now, in reality, you reevaluate the programs to see if there's any other way to salvage them or to find another way to fund them. But right now, we are maintaining current service levels with the local funds that are available to you. We do not have any control over what the federal government or the state government might do, or for that matter, even private foundations. So I just want to, for full disclosure, saying when I say we're maintaining current service levels, that's almost 100% accurate. But there are uncertainties out there that I can't deal with in advance. Okay. We created a chart. This is the right chart. Let me check mine. These are our revenues, and this is just a very simple way of looking at the percentage growth in revenues. And you'll notice that they tend here in the last few years, kind of up and down and back up. But this is on our, the value, I think primarily from property tax, Paul, is that correct?
That's the percentage of property tax revenues to our.
And what this is showing is we were for a number of years funded off the property tax at 60%. We now are relying on it for about 91%. And again, a good and bad news story. The good news is, is that property tax in some ways is more stable than having to rely on, say, sales tax or the economy that goes into recession. But it also means that all our eggs are kind of in one basket. So we have to be careful on that. This red line is to show you what percentage of the monies that you're getting in are what we call general purpose revenues. And general purpose means that we can, everything between this dot or this line and this line is already spoken for. These are monies that come from other jurisdictions like the state or the feds, and they send the money to you, and they also tell you how to spend it. So they're not allowed to decision-making there. It also includes what we call direct revenues. And that is, under the laws of California, that, you know, the Jarvis-Gan kind of initiatives, that we may charge what it costs to deliver a service, but we can't make a profit. So that means that we charge what it costs to deliver the service, and we apply those fees right back to the program areas. So again, not a lot of decision-making. Once you decide on the fee, the money goes there, whether it be in planning, police work, parks, whatever it might be.
So two things, if I could, everything between the red line and the blue dot, we don't have any control over at all?
Right.
It just comes in and it goes automatically?
We administer.
Okay. Second, second thing is, can you offer, is, you know, we, we now are much more dependent on property tax than we were three or four years ago. Is the basic reason for that, that whole sort of state realignment of, of funding? I see Mr. Dursey shaking his head.
Right. In the last two years, you may recall, we had, there was a thing called the CAR tax, commonly, or VLF, Vehicle License Fees. That was a, an in-lu tax. That was, it was a property tax that was collected by the state on movable property vehicles. And then that money was sent back to the local jurisdictions. And in the early 90s, when, or maybe it was the later 90s, later 90s, when, actually, turn of the century, Ray Davis's era, that there was a surplus in the state. And it was several billion dollars. And so the state decided that they would try to do something for the taxpayers. But instead of doing it with their money, they did it with local government's money, which was his license fees. And that got us into this kind of spiral that we are now coming out of. But part of the solution to that, Proposition 1A and working with the state, they have taken vehicle license fees, and that belongs to the state now. And they have restored to us property tax, which is why we're up around the 91%.
Supervisor Flynn? May I ask a question about the red line and the blue line? If you look at other counties of similar, similar counties, and I know there's no perfect similarity, or you look at cities in Ventura County like Thousand Oaks, Seamy, and Oxnard in Ventura, how would those lines look from comparable counties? The reason I ask the question is that the red line especially is other revenue other than property taxes.
Well, it may include some.
Some.
Yeah. The, we'll kind of get, I think I know what your point is going to be, and we're going to kind of get to that, which is.
Oh, okay.
For example, if you look at this line, it doesn't vary too much. You know, we're like 30, 33% or a third of our money is what we call general purpose. And that doesn't mean that you don't, you have a lot of discretion with it. In fact, you don't have a lot of discretion with it, but at least it didn't come with an earmark, and you have some ability to manage it. But this number has gone up slightly. So, and these are percentages. So as a percent of our total income, our local general purpose revenue is a larger percentage, not by much, but slightly. Now, that can be interpreted two ways. It either means that we're getting more general purpose revenue than you get to govern, or it means that as a percentage of the whole, we've got less overall money to spend. It's possible that this going up is really a reflection of the federal government, the state government, cutting off some of those grants and things that they send to you. So we have to kind of look at it, you know.
It's a pretty flat red line.
Right, yeah. So, okay, let's go on to the, now, here's one that's not so flat. This is, it was not meant to be a cartoon, but it was not, it was meant to illustrate the volatility of revenues. And the blue line is the annual increase in assessed value. So while we have some good news right now, look what's happened over the years, from year to year, all over the place. And now we're 91% reliant on that. So this is the cautionary tale for everybody that's, that's interested in this sort of thing, besides me. The, the red line is the rolling 10-year average increase of assessed value. This kind of goes to what your board has asked me before. Yeah, we have a good peak year. Is this the peak year? We never know. The thing has gone up in the last few years, and each year, everybody thought, well, it can't be this good for this long, or it can't get any better, and it did. But it, it is a very complex economic explanation, having to do with price of housing and other things. But if you look at this, you'll notice that this line, as a rolling average, is for at least the last, you know, almost 10 years, is substantially below what's going on up here. So if you're always just budgeting on the year as the money comes in, or you get up to a high point and you budget across this way, look what happens to you. This is what you're going to really be faced with in the future to maintain your standard of living. So we just bring that to you to remind everybody that when we get into things like assessed value, it's, it's more than just, you know, celebrating when things go up. I'm not going to go a lot into this, but this particular chart was intended to show the assumptions that we make. And we take like the secured property tax rule, and then the Budget Office, working with the Assessor's Office, comes up with a number. And we were, last year, going on a 10% increase based on the budgeted amount. This year, this is a more aggressive approach, but in order to answer some of the questions about how we do it and putting all the money on the table at the budget time, is this is the estimated actual budget, which differs slightly from what we thought it was going to be when we started out. So this year, we have taken an approach that says, we're going to go to the estimated actual income, and we're going to apply the estimated increase to that, which is 10%. So that's about as bullish as one dare be. But when we appropriate the money, we're not suggesting that you appropriate 10%. We're, we're, well, at least not into operations. We're talking about putting some into operations and then some into your reserves so that you can maintain your credit rating.
Not only maintain our credit rating, but if we're, you know, near the top of a bubble or something in the property values, then it's a good idea to have, when you have the funds, to be able to put them in reserves. We may not have the opportunity if things drop.
Right. I mean, that, excellent point. Sorry, I didn't make it myself. Thank you.
She's happy you did.
Yeah. What Supervisor Parks is saying is that if you don't have those reserves, that's what creates the chaos when you, you go from a peak to a valley. By having the reserve, that allows us to take a soft landing. We don't have to have that knee-jerk reaction of suddenly freezes on everything and layoffs. You can instead just say, all right, we will not increase our spending and we'll let things catch up, which is a much more sensible way to live.
Before you go on, I have a question. Why are we being slightly more bullish than we have been? Because we have not been bullish at all.
Okay, well, okay. Thank you, Ms.
Yeah, I want to know what.
Okay. The reason is, is that we achieved the same thing last year, but instead of being bullish, we just, we knew that the assessed value would be slightly higher than what we were predicting. We predict the, the assessed value increase early in the year. By the time you get to the budget, we have more information and have a greater confidence, possibly, that, that the budget is, the assessed value will rise. But as you may recall, on some occasions, people whose names and offices will remain anonymous, but will come during budget hearing, running down the aisle and said, wait, we found more money. You guys appropriate it. We're trying to get away from that by saying, we're going to go ahead and make those estimates in advance, and then we're going to put it in the bank. So nobody can come in at the last minute and say, wait a minute, you're hiding the ball. This, this number should be higher. Instead, we say, no, we're, we're pretty aggressive. I don't think anybody will argue with the, the way in which the estimates are made. And we're taking this amount of money, and we're setting it into the reserves to protect against this fluctuation. So everything's on the table. Now, whether that's a good idea or not, you know, it sort of goes to.
I support it.
A philosophy of transparency so that we maintain confidence with everybody. Otherwise, we have unions and other people saying, whoa, wait a minute, you guys are not being straight with us. You have this other little pocket of money. We just want to be sure that it's all out there. So if there's going to be a discussion or an argument over it, we do it in a timely way, and we don't have these questions as to whether or not.
We want to hide the money in reserves ahead of time.
Well, we want, yeah, we're going to hide in plain sight. We're going to tell you we're hiding it in the reserve, and everybody will know that's where it is. Okay, this, this is just a real sales tax. The line looks pretty spectacular as it rises, you know, and from 94, roughly a 10-year period, 10, 12-year period, it's gone up. But if you look at it in terms of dollars, it represents a very small percentage of your budget. You know, you've got, you have an $800 million budget, and less than 10 of it comes from sales tax. And I think this maybe goes to what Supervisor Flynn was alluding to, which is, how do we compare to other places and to cities? We do not rely on a property tax. We have planning laws that are for orderly development, which means that we're not going to build big box centers.
Sales tax, not property tax.
Yeah, yeah. Pardon me, sales tax. Pardon me, I misspoke. We're not going to build the big box center in the unincorporated area in order to get the cash register and the sales tax. We have ways of doing that where it goes into the cities. We get a slight share of it, but, but we do not consider this to be the mainstay for how we finance government Ventura County. And I have a chart, I think, that comes up next.
So it might have to come someday to a kind of a sales tax revenue sharing.
Well, yeah, there's, every year, they talk about reforming that. It doesn't make sense the way we do it. Our sales tax goes not to where the people are, but where the cash registers are. You know, which, now, this.
And essentially, too, that assists the cities with their sales tax, that the county is not competing against them in the unincorporated area, so.
But if you look, these are counties, and these aren't all the counties. I think it's.
Probably when, when some of our planning policies were, were adopted, we didn't think of, you know, what impact they might have in the long-term future. We were nice guys to adopt them, and I think we adopted the right thing, the right planning policies. But I, I would hope that they're going to lead to some kind of sales tax, for example, revenue sharing for the future.
Yeah, reform of some sort. Here is a chart for you, just, it's not an exact comparison, but these are 26th of the 58 counties in California. We didn't put all the others on because you see, it got down to where it almost was insignificant. So, but if you just look at these numbers, here is Ventura County. We're 24th out of 58 counties in terms of sales tax. And our sales tax and our population are pretty close to the same. But look what happened here. Here's Sacramento. Here's their population. This is how much sales tax they collect, because they have a different planning policy. And here's LA. Here's their population, and here's their sales tax down here. So it's all over the lot. What it, what it shows you is that's not necessarily a great way to finance local government, but it's, it has historical reasons. We're just trying to cope with it, and we just need to be aware of it.
Sacramento has more people than Los Angeles, Kevin.
No, but they have more sales tax. Okay, the first point was to maintain current service levels. But, as everybody knows, the. state budget is not structurally balanced. They went from a thirteen-billion-dollar surplus, and in like about two years, they were at a projected thirty-seven-billion-dollar deficit. Why? Because the state revenues were relying heavily on capital gains taxes from the dot-com industry. And the dot-com industry went in the tank, and suddenly, the state lost like twenty-five percent of their revenues. Not stable. And so, that, you know, we have a similar situation, not quite as dramatic. If we continue to look at the annual assessed value as something that's recurring, and the growth in the annual assessed value, and we build the entire service levels of this county on that, you're going to end up being in a deficit position.
So, so like the state had a reliance on capital gains taxes, which are much more flexible, we have this reliance on, we have this potential to be reliant on, on increasingly, on these property taxes that have grown dramatically.
The, the annual increase, yeah. If we, if we use it all every year, and consider that to be our standard of living, there will be some bad years. Then we have the Federal Deficit Reduction Act, which is a euphemism for the government reordering what they're doing, and taking money that they said they were going to send, whether it be the Army Corps of Engineers for dredging, or whether it be for, you name it, whatever comes locally, housing and other things. They've got a deficit they're trying to make up over the natural disasters like Katrina, plus we've got a war going on with huge federal deficits, which means you cannot rely on the federal government to be as generous as they've been in the past, and some of the promises they've made to us may have, or will be modified.
Yeah, I, I think this, this is the area that's going to be our hardest hit this year, for us at local government, because it's going to be a, a backdoor-taking of, of local funds by moving the shell around on the human services pieces that we are now responsible for through mandates from federal and state programs.
Right.
And I hope we're on top of that one, because I, I think there's some severe impacts to our HSA services levels that we'll be stuck with.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to piggyback on that from, at least from what I'm hearing, I'm trying to confirm, but all of our programs that, where we're still going to be, we're still going to be mandated to provide the program, but as the federal government dramatically cuts back, all of those programs, you know, Medicare, Medi-Cal, we still have to, to carry that ball for all that, and we don't know how big that hit's going to be, but that hit will be substantial.
All the welfare reform, absolutely.
But that hit will be substantial for us, right.
Good. We all got that point. And I hope the public does. I mean, that is the big unknown, and it, and it's not something that will hit just one year. It will roll through in the next, you know, half a dozen years.
The thing is, what the public reads, though, is, is that regardless of this issue that you raised, and you raised, PEP projects are still put into the budget for congressional members.
Which is the big ones.
Supervisor, this is to you.
Could I just, this, better now than, than later afterwards? You go back to state budget, not structurally balanced. Am I correct, and I'll take a nod from Mr. Dursey or a comment from you, but when the state had that, that thirteen-billion-dollar increase in capital gains that one year, they went ahead and increased their operating expenses by that thirteen billion. Then, within two years, they were at a thirty-seven-billion-dollar deficit, because that, all those positions then kept growing in cost every year, but meanwhile, the capital gains didn't grow.
That one didn't grow its front.
Its front. And that's what, that's what took them from the surplus to the deficit so rapidly.
Substantial, plus, they put in a tax cut at the same time. They, they gave up half the, in one year, they gave up half of the surplus by, by cutting the car tax.
The car tax, right.
So, you know, and not unlike what's happening at the federal level.
Exactly.
Tax cuts, while spending, deficit spending's increasing. We don't, aren't allowed the deficit spending aspect of it, so.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing, but, so the definition of fiscal conservative is taking on all sorts of different things. Okay, let's see. We've got general fund designations, and here's a, a chart to give you a quick look at. When we started with all this, this is where your reserve was, basically negative. We were, we were covering it at that point. We were living off of a, the tobacco settlement reserve that we had set aside as the only cash we had. But, you know, through steady steering of this, we are now up to this point, which is a little over seven percent, so we're not quite at the halfway mark, and the goal is that you should have a fifteen percent designation. What I think is interesting about this is that we have this designated reserve, we have all of the current service levels being maintained and fully funded, no freezes and no layoffs right now. Back here, we hadn't, had no money, and we had freezes and layoffs almost every year. So the, the idea of the freezes and layoffs, this doesn't affect what we do operationally year to year. What it does is, is that it's still like your credit card. If you max out a credit card the first month, and then start making minimum payments on it, you may live well for a while, but eventually, it eats you alive. And so the, the really good financial news is, is that during this most difficult period, all of, not all, but most of the hard decisions were made that put us on the right track, and now we are able to at least be, have the comfort of knowing that that which we are delivering, we can continue to afford to deliver, we can pay fair wages in our labor contracts, and we have had, you know, relative labor peace, which is a good thing for everybody, as well as the right thing to do.
In dollars, Madam Chair, in dollars, what does that represent, the two thousand six, oh, seven? I know the percentage.
Oh, the, about sixty million. One of the things, as a percentage, that we have to chase, is every year, the size of the budget itself gets larger. So we don't, even we can move up a few, few dollars if we're not moving at the same rate as the expansion of services.
It's not a friendly area to be in.
Okay, let's go to the next chart. Todd Road jail expansion is one of the obligations that we have in the future that we know of, because jail crowding is starting everywhere, not just in Ventura County, and so we need to plan now for what happens in five and ten years. This is what the annual, estimated annual operating increase is. That is, that, that provides debt service, as well as staffing and the rest of it, so it, it, it won't be cheap. Right now, it's maybe, in today's dollars, maybe around eleven million. Here's another one. It keeps being pushed off, but with all of the interest, this morning's newspaper on the earthquake in San Francisco, I'm sure this will be a high on the radar of the legislature. At some point, every hospital, not just ours, has to be retrofitted or additional modern hospital rooms constructed, and that's another, that's, I mean, that's a huge number, too, and it's an obligation of local government to figure it out, so.
When does that have to be accomplished?
Is Mike coming here? I think it's like, the year, about two thousand thirteen was the extension we have, but when you figure, it's about a five-to-seven-year process from planning, environmental assessments and all the rest of it, it's, it's out there. And our purpose in mentioning it is not that we're not dealing with it, but those are all the things that are competing with operating budgets, too, and have to be, reserves need to be built up. And then we have such things as unfunded liabilities. OPEVs, those are, that's an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is the thing that is eating San Diego County and some of the other counties alive. Good news in our county is that that's a very contained, fairly small number. We didn't grant the kinds of benefits that were granted elsewhere, but it's still an obligation, and there have been lawsuits trying to expand that obligation by inference or implication of, of the law. The retirees, not the retirees association, but a group of retirees did sue your board. We won it in the lower court, but they have threatened to take it up on appeal. You know, that might be a hundred-million-dollar, I, we think will prevail. We think the law's on our side, but that's the kind of exposure. And there are other litigation, and then there's deferred maintenance on all of your buildings throughout the county that's somewhere between twenty and thirty million dollars. So those are all the things that are out there that we need to, as we go into this new budget. It's great that we don't have to lay anybody off or defreeze things, but it's also good to remember.
Do we have, do we yet have a rough estimate of the claims from the La Cincida litigation against the county?
No, we do not.
We do not.
Do you have a range?
It would be pure speculation, and I would, I would be very hesitant about tossing out a number.
Could that speculation be many, many tens of millions?
It could. And it couldn't.
Well, hopefully, it won't be, but it could, yeah. And the, and the solutions that are, have been suggested are many tens, if not in excess of a hundred million dollars. So we're not without our challenges, as Dr. Durand used to refer to problems. They were always challenged, it's never a problem. But we have lots of, lots of challenges, and if we have too many more, they'll become a problem. So that's it for today, unless you got no questions, if not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very thorough. Very much appreciated. I'm going to take my leave, and Supervisor Michaels is going to take over the chair.
Let me ask you a question. Okay, I believe we kind of got everything out of order this morning, but if I'm correct, we're at our ten o'clock time certain? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to be leaving also soon to attend Diane Feinstein's reception.
Okay. Do we have any forfeits votes that we need before? Let's see the agenda.
There you have one on Public Works.
Yeah.
Number twenty-nine is a forfeit.
Okay, can you hold on for a few minutes? With the indulgence, I am so sorry, we're already half an hour past your time certain, and it is past ten-thirty. So for fear of losing Supervisor Flynn and the forfeits vote capability, I, I would like to go ahead and take item twenty-one now, if that's okay with the board.
Twenty-nine.
Hmm? Well, twenty-one is forfeits, too, and it's a ten-thirty time certain.
Okay.
And it's before twenty-nine.
Okay.
Okay. Are we prepared for item twenty-one? Who's going to do the staff report on that? California State Department of Water Resources grant? I guess we're not. Let's look at twenty-nine. Well, I think it is, but are we prepared? Do we have any questions? Okay. This is going to have to be a short item, because, oh, never mind, we'll go to twenty-nine. We may lose our forfeits vote, but that's too long, because we're already trailing the ten o'clock. So item twenty-nine is reported the use of emergency server, emergency contract authority.
Chair members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Ron Coons, Director of Public Works. This item I put on the regular agenda because of the question last week, and we usually don't have them for every two weeks, but with not having a full board next week, we put it on this today.
Okay.
I have answered the questions last week on the seeking proposals from a number of companies, and so I think you all have that information. We had sought ten proposals from, for the River project, and we sought thirteen proposals from the Pole Creek project. We gave it to the best proposer, and we still need the projects to continue. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to respond.
Move the recommended action.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. We got through that one. We will now go to the ten AM board study session regarding the Workforce Investment Board. This is slated to be a fifteen-minute item. Less is better.
Less is better, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I, we're having an issue with personnel here. As in senior personnel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. My name is Carmen Ramos Soriano, and I am Vice President of City National Bank, a member of the Workforce Investment Board, and Chair of the Youth Council. I am pleased to be here this morning to give you an update on this year's activities on behalf of the Workforce Investment Board. The purpose of today's presentation is to encourage dialogue between us, so, so I will reserve some time at the end of the presentation, hopefully. Before I begin, I'd like to take a few moments to recognize the members of the Workforce Investment Board and the guests, who took time out from their busy schedules to be with us today. Would the members of the Workforce Investment Board and partners please stand and be recognized? Thank you for being here today. Because of your last study, in the last study session, we viewed our overall mission and budget, we thought we'd begin this year's presentation with the WIB retreat, where three priorities were identified, and end with a discussion on how we can best work together to address workforce needs. This year's working retreat was held with nearly two-thirds of the WIB members, who identified three priorities that would be the basis for strategic plan, design for implementation and measurement during this fiscal year. The three priorities are, the WIB encouraged, the WIB will encourage the promotion of workforce education in schools and support curriculum that coincide with businesses and economic needs. The WIB will form partnerships to explore and promote workforce issues, and the WIB will develop the job and career centers, so they are seen as vital resources for job seekers and businesses. To elaborate on priority number one, the workforce education in schools. The intention of the WIB was to address two primary needs. One was to work with the schools to prepare the youth for a workforce, and the other was to provide youth with the necessary information they need to make informed choices about their future. To that end, the Youth Council commissioned a youth resource map in partnership with the Interface Children Family Services, a copy of which you saw when I was last here on February twenty-eighth. The Youth Council is also considering a couple of youth proposals to develop a labor market information brochure and a distribution plan. On March thirtieth, the WIB, in partnership with the Ventura County School Boards Association, co-hosted a forum, "The Future of Ventura County's Workforce: A Business and Education Collaboration." Nearly a hundred and eighty participants representing a broad cross-section of the community, including high schools, community colleges, universities, the Workforce Investment Board, several businesses, community-based organizations, the Human Services Agency, a representative from the Department of Labor, and most importantly, about twenty youth, including youth from the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oxnard and Port Rainie, Work Training Programs, Inc., and the Oxnard City Corp, who volunteered as ushers. We'd like to thank Supervisor Parks for her attendance and participation, and Supervisor Flynn for dropping by and lending his support. After hearing from our keynote speaker, Dr. Mark Sneepe, and panel, and a panel of speakers, including Dr. Weiss, giving the high school perspective, Doctors Meznick and Faulkner Bolger on the community college perspective, and person, and my own personal perspective, and the perspective of our local business needs by Mr. Peter Zerhop of Hans Automation, the audience went to work and compiled a hearty list of ideas, barriers, and solutions to further workforce education in the schools. The list is now in the hands of the High Performing High Schools Commission and the Youth Council, who will study and prioritize and begin to take action. We are so very pleased and proud to have been partners in the sponsorship of this event. We know that this is only the beginning of work that we will not just, that will not just enhance our workforce, but be of value to the very important decisions each youth faces as they consider their future paths. The WIB is also involved with the Executive Committee of the East County Tech Prep Consortium with Morcar College and several high schools in the East County. Not listed here is the WIB's support of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Oxnard and Port Rainie's Job Fair that was held April thirteenth, and the Oxnard College Youth Leadership Conference to be held this Saturday, April twenty-second. Our second priority, related to the, related to the development of strategic partnerships to promote workforce issues, we have targeted and developed partnerships around specific industries, overarching concerns, and current circumstances. First, the WIB commissioned a study on agricultural, on agriculture, with Doctors Watkins and Maxey of the Santa Barbara Economic Forecast Project and the California Lutheran University, that was launched on January twenty-sixth of this year. Believing that good information should be followed by good action, we are now considering what can be done to build workable models for both economic development and training as agricultural trends shift. The First Roundtable Model, initiated by the Ventura Chamber of Commerce and now maintained with the WIB, brings together healthcare trainers and employers. with the WIB brings together healthcare trainers and employers to continue to tackle the healthcare workforce crisis. This dynamic group of partners work on several issues from assuring that curriculum stay current with workplace needs and trends to prepare for the healthcare job fair. Using this same model, interested partners are now considering the issue of literacy and will begin by the development of an asset map. One of the newest members of the WIB is setting what we believe a best practice model in the community. Haas Automation and Peter Zerhat is working with the WIB to develop training programs with community colleges, a scholarship program for youth, and will use the roundtable model to build a manufacturing alliance to meet the workforce needs in the manufacturing sector. The WIB is also pleased to participate with Ventura College on the Construction Industry Summit that will take place tomorrow. In the biotechnology industry, the WIB is partnering with Morcar College on the completion of a study and survey that will guide a new curriculum. The Business Employment Services Department and Ventura College are working to train individuals in the biotech industry. The WIB will be working with VACIDA to develop a transition plan for those people who will be affected by the base realignment. This is a rapidly developing activity, and we are very proud of our community whose dedication to working together is a key factor in keeping Ventura County's economy and workforce healthy. Our third priority is to focus on the wonderful resources of the job and career centers. They have been an asset to our county, serving over 77,000 people last year. The WIB is dedicated to focus on supporting the job and career centers and to get them to the next level by expanding service partnerships, expanding training, and improving systems. We ask for your continued support as we enter a period where both reauthorization and funding are in jeopardy. The WIB, the WIB believes in the power of local community through the current system that utilizes workforce investment boards as brokers of funds, resources, and partners, and as dedicated strategists. We believe that this is, that this is a very successful system, and is a very thing that must be preserved to stay competitive and viable in a fast-changing environment. During the personal visits that we have made with you over the last year, we have, we have been pleased to hear your ideas and address your specific concerns, such as training for water technicians, Supervisor Michaels, training for youth in gangs, Supervisor Flynn, coordinating with the Ventura College Foundation on their Promise Program, Supervisor Long, recruitment strategies, Supervisor Bennett, and co-recruitment of key business leaders, Supervisor Parks. We ask that you continue to send both seekers and businesses in your region to the job and career centers or to partner with the WIB. We thank you for your continued leadership that supports the WIB and its ability to serve this community. In closing, we encourage you to consider the Workforce Investment Board as not just a resource for existing businesses and job seekers, but as a strategic part of the economic development for this county. While there are so many other ongoing activities that our time did not allow us to elaborate upon, such as training, rapid response, business retention, layoff aversion, and youth services, we hope that this presentation gives you just a flavor of the work that the WIB does, and of the power of leveraging the strength of the many partners whose work makes a positive impact on the current and future workforce needs for Ventura County. The Workforce Investment Board thanks you for the opportunity, and at this time, welcome your comments or questions.
Questions, comments?
I'd just like to comment, and thank you very much for your leadership. This is kind of unusual to have people who are appointed to the board make the presentation, but I'm very happy that it's being done, because then we know that there's a lot of study taking place, and people understand how this money is to be used, and, and the amount of money to be used, and so forth. So it's kind of a first step in that direction, and luckily, we're headed by, you gave the presentation, I want to thank you. Thank you for the time you spent understanding the issues.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
I believe you are looking for four feedback with your annual meeting here, so just three things I'd like to point out. One, I think that we constantly have to keep our eye on the ball of the Workforce Investment Board, and that is your big job is to do meaningful and really effective career training, matching up job skills so that people, particularly people coming off of welfare rolls, et cetera, get employed, and, and that is a huge job by itself, and it's so easy to sort of go, well, but these other things are like fun to work at, okay? And but we just have to just keep hammering away, and so we have to have the best career centers, the best matches, and, and get that done, and, and so it feels good that the WIB feels like it's more focused on that mission this year than I felt like last year when I was here. I particularly like the legislative platform. It's real clear, clean, and it just focuses on reauthorizing the WIB and trying to get you the resources to do that career training, and stays out of that whole controversial area. And I, I really appreciate people like Marcos and et cetera being there. I think that, that to make sure we have a broad enough group there to make sure that we're not getting into things like minimum wage issues and those things, which I think distract us from the real mission of the WIB. The other thing I'd point out is Lynn Jacobs' leadership is now going to be lost at the WIB because of her appointment at the state level, and I sure hope that, and that the WIB can manage that leadership change well. I'm sure there are other, you know, the good leaders that will be able to merge, and if the board can help with that in any way, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Madam Chair, I thank you, and all of you who were here today from the WIB board. It is a volunteer role, but it's one that is invaluable to this county, and I really appreciate what I see is just, just a very progressive and active board. Elaine's doing an outstanding job in, in working with the board, the board guiding in the, in the role of what, what implementations and accountabilities, and, but the, what I saw in the report this time that I, I think is so strengthened is the partnerships with our educational communities, with the community colleges, and with the, and also with the businesses, so that we, the goal to get ahead of the curve on what the needs are for the future employment force, employee force, particularly in a county that is, has, has significant challenges in housing costs and living costs, et cetera, and, and yet knowing that we need all levels of workers, both trained and skilled and, and ready to go to work. So, thank you. Outstanding work.
Thank you. And I, I thank you for your instant action on the request or concern that I brought forward, and that was brought to me by several of people from Waterworks and also people in other Waterworks agencies, that the, the community college had cut its tech course, and they didn't have enough people trained and no place to train them. Some people were actually cut mid-course before they were able to complete. So thanks to the, the hard work of, of the WIB, the community college reinstated that, and things are moving right along. So thank you very much. That was quick action and a good, good.
Madam Chair, that reminds me of one of the things I was at Animal Rig the other day. We have apparently a tremendous shortage of veterinary technicians that are only trained at Pierce College. Good, I wanted to make sure you're aware of it. Amgen, Amgen is hiring them all, and nobody else can get them, right? Okay, great, thanks.
I'd like to move the recommended action, and thank you very much for all of your work, and I especially like the part about the issue with so-called gang members and the path out of that, certainly one of those paths will be getting a job.
Thank you very much. It's a receive and file.
That's, that's required.
Yep, got it. And there's no opposition, so thank you all very much. Now we will go to item 21. I apologize to the board members that they can't take a break, but we need to get this done, because Supervisor Flynn would, needs to leave. So with that, let's see if I can work all the equipment today. Okay. You're on.
Good morning, board members. Mr. Johnson, for the record, my name is Sue Hughes. I'm the Legislative Analyst for the County of Ventura, and I'm before you here today as Chair of something called the Ventura Countywide Integrated Regional Water Management Plan Group. I'll try not to say that too many times. And what we're doing is seeking your approval and acceptance of an Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Grant in the amount of $220,000. It will help us develop that integrated plan we need to get funding for Chapter Eight, Proposition 50. Also today, I'd like to provide you with an update of both our planning and our implementation efforts, two distinct, but at the same time, very coordinated projects. So to start out, I'd like to remind you all where we all started. In August of 2002, the county was asked if we would be interested in joining with something called the Northern and Coastal Coalition, Water Bond Coalition, which we did join in August of 2002. The bond passed in November of 2002, and that began months and months and months of work to figure out how we in Ventura County could become recipients of some dollars for big water projects. So we spent several months in the year 2003, learning about and providing input to the state on their draft guidelines for just what was an Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, how you went about developing one, and how we could get some of that $500 million that was in that Chapter Eight pot of money. Probably the most important element of Chapter Eight, besides the fact that it had $500 million in it, is that you must have what the state refers to as an adopted Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, and it'd be, in order to secure project funding, and I'll explain that in just a minute. But on with our timeline. In August of 2004 is when we actually began the development of a group. We sent out invitations to all of the cities, all of the special districts, all of the water agencies, and the nonprofits that had water-related projects that they were working on, and invited them to be stakeholders in this endeavor. And in November of 2004, the state released their guidelines on Chapter Eight proposition funding. We spent from November of 2004 until May of 2005, developing what Ventura Countywide Group called an interim plan. And then we spent several months working on a list of projects that we would put into the implementation grant application, refining those projects, getting people up to speed on if their project was ready for funding. And then, in January of 2006, the Ventura Countywide Group was notified that they were, that they had been approved for the $220,000 planning grant. Now, during that time, there was an effort, there were two separate efforts going on in the County of Ventura, geographically speaking. The Ventura Countywide Group is composed, composed of this group of partners that you see on this slide right here. The, the stakeholders are from the Ventura and the Santa Clara River watersheds. At the same time, there were efforts going on in the Cuyagus Creek watershed, and that group is comprised of the cities of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Camarillo, Cam San, Cuyagus Municipal Water District, Resource Conservation District, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, just to name some of them that are part of the Cuyagus Group. Important to note here is that the Ventura Countywide Group applied for a planning grant. That's what we're here today about. The Cuyagus Group already had an adopted plan, so they did not apply for a planning grant. That's the distinction here as far as the planning efforts go and funding for that. Now, to shift gears a little bit, and to talk about the implementation part of this, this is what we like to refer to as the real money for the real projects. So the implementation, if I can walk you through what this means for us in kind of a timeline. In July of 2005, both the Ventura Countywide Group and the Cuyagus Group submitted what the state called Step One Implementation Grants. We each, we each put in a grant application. Well, when it became apparent in the fall of 2005 that the state was looking for fewer and larger regions to fund, our two groups voluntarily consolidated. So we decided and told the state, we will voluntarily consolidate and become one group. This callback list, it's a little hard to see on the screen. What this amounts to is the state announced that it had received 50 applications for the first round of funding for Prop 50, Chapter Eight. They received 50 applications that totaled $1.4 billion worth of requests. This for Step has $150 million in it. So there was a lot of need and not a lot of money to go around. They invited 16 of those 50 applicants back for what they call Step Two funding. We were one of the, we, the consolidated group, were one of the 16 invited back. The state has said that they will fund six of those 16, and they will fund six of those 16 at $25 million, nothing less. Now, there is one little side story here. One of those counties that scored above us, one of those groups, didn't ask for $25 million. They simply asked for $10 million. So the state has said they will fund six at $25 million, and possibly a seventh at that $10 million, should they score high enough. So we've been telling everybody, we look at it as they're going to fund six at $25 million. And as you can see, we ranked seventh after we consolidated. So we're kind of right there. Of course, so did Orange County rank seventh, if you really, let's look at all of the scoring. We like to think that we ranked seventh, though, and with funding for six, possibly seven, we feel like we're in good standing, but there's a whole lot of work that has to be done in the future, in the next 50 days or so. So what does that mean, and where do we go from here? The, earlier this month, all of the stakeholders in all three of the watersheds got together and developed a list of projects and finalized the list of projects that will go in the Step Two grant application. And last week, the Ventura Countywide Group adopted a joint resolution to officially consolidate the Ventura Countywide Group and the Cuyagus Group into something called the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County, and that's how the grant application will be submitted. The purpose of, besides us merging for Prop 50, we will be looking for future Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Funds as the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County. That does not mean that each of those other groups don't keep their individual identities. For this type of funding, we are, we will now be known as the Watersheds Coalition. It covers all three watersheds in Ventura County. Adoption of that joint resolution is being considered by the Cuyagus Creek Steering Committee tomorrow at their regular meeting. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be back to your board with the resolution that we need adopted that goes in with the grant application for that $25 million worth of projects. Now, my very last one here is to, if you have any questions, but I would like to say, we've spent a lot of time working on this, four years from the time that they first called and said, are you guys interested? And there's been easily more than 30 stakeholders, and when I say 30 stakeholders, I mean entities. There's been countless staffers that have worked on this that show up to all sorts of meetings, and, you know, we started out a little shaky at the very beginning, didn't know what we were doing, and, but after four years and a whole lot of projects and a whole lot of lists, and a whole lot of what if we had this kind of money, what would we do with it? We've come to be, to speak with a unified voice. We understand that to be successful in this, you have to, in securing implementation funding, you have to be able to work together. You have to put forward one plan, and that's what we plan on doing, is adopting one countywide plan for all three watersheds. That's due January 1st, 2007, so we'll be back to the board later in the year with the adoption of that. But I would like to thank everybody who's worked on this, and they're not off the hook yet, because there's still a whole lot of work to be done. We have until June 8th to get that grant application to the state, and as one of the folks who works for Cuyagus Municipal Water District says, one point can be the difference between $25 million and zilch. So we would like to be offered that $25 million. The key to all of this was we learned to collaborate, we learned to do this on a consensus basis, and probably the most important thing is we all learned to trust each other, and when you have a lot of money out there, that can be a very difficult thing to do. So I have huge appreciation for everyone that worked on this, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and I know there's some speakers.
Any questions? Or do you want to hear the speakers? Okay. To the speakers, I'm going to ask you to keep at three minutes or less, because Supervisor Flynn has to leave. If we don't get through the speakers, we don't get a vote with that four of us. So if you could, and anything shorter is fine, but please keep it at three minutes. Jim Roche?
Jim Roche? Thank you for your cooperation. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Lynn, Jim. Just one of these I'm talking to.
Those two black ones, just stand, they'll pick you.
You bet. Thank you. I'm Jim Roche. I'm from Ojai. I represent the Ojai Groundwater Management Agency and the Ojai Water Conservation District. I just want to tell you that the process that we've been through, she described perfectly. Mark Twain and others said waters were fighting. Somehow or another, we've managed to overcome that because we all recognize a mutual need. It's just amazing in wet years how we forget the drought, and in dry years, we forget the floods. They are both serious and critical questions for us. This process is vitally important. I'd really like to thank your staff, Sue and Lynn, you've done a terrific job. It's a collegial process, and please support them, and I hope we, I hope we can move forward with the implementation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm Russ Baggerly. Today, I stand before you as a representative of both the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency and the Board of Casitas Municipal Water District. Stakeholders in this process, we have two projects, one for each of those agencies on this list. It's incredibly important to both of the agencies to move forward with this. I just want to thank staff for their incredible work, and this should be a real no-brainer for you because we get to spend somebody else's money. I do want to say that the, the incredible amount of agencies and non-governmental agencies that were involved with this, you can imagine that it might have been difficult, but it was not at all like herding cats. We all worked together very well, even when somebody's project got kicked off the first, the first round of approvals. I encourage your enthusiastic support for this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Brytag? Very good.
Good morning. I'm Ken Brytag with United Water Conservation District, and I just wanted to say that our agency is very supportive of this, too, and thank you for considering it. It's important, we feel like it's important that the county act is the agent to accept the grant, and it's an important step in making sure that we receive our fair share of not only Prop 50 funding, but as Sue indicated somewhat, every indication that we have is that future water bonds are going to go in this direction. They're going to be, need to be part of not just specific projects, but part of a more regional approach to water planning. And we, we have a number of things that we're going to be looking to do in the future, and they're going to need to be part of this. So we're not, no longer going to be able to get $100,000 here, $100,000 there anymore. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Norman Wilkinson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, you may recall, some of you may recall me as the former Public Works Director of San Paul. I'm now representing the city of Fillmore on a part-time basis. You just tried that future water bonds will, will depend on this plan, while I'm here to tell you that the future has arrived. Last week, the state invited back applicants for the Consolidated Grants Program, which is several pots of money from Proposition 50, Proposition 40, and some other places. And there are a number of projects from Ventura County that have been invited back in that process, including a project from Fillmore, which I'm involved with, Attila Haddam, wetlands on the Lower Ventura River, Ormond Beach Wetlands, and I understand the Septic System Project in El Rio. Those projects do not require that they be in the proposed plan, but the applicants are encouraged to coordinate. Well, when the state says you're encouraged, you better take it seriously. So we certainly recommend this planning effort, not just for the $25 million package, but for all the other things that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Mark Pumper with the City of Oxnard, here to show support for the proposal, and also to thank your awesome staff for all the work that they've done in navigating us through this process, and also to build the team approach that we've taken for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Capron?
Morning. I'm Mark Capron, representing Ventura Regional Sanitation District and Santa Clara Sanitary District. And I just wanted to thank you for allowing Sue and Lynn to work on this thing, and they've been doing a great job of divining what the state wants and communicating that to everybody, and it is very regional. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome tie.
Don Kendall, Cuyagus Municipal Water District, on the other side of the county. We support this effort to consolidate, and our members are Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Camarillo, County Water Works District, and others, and we're looking forward to getting this thing done. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Deacon?
Hello, Joe Deacon, City of Simi Valley. As Dr. Kendall just said, we're part of the Cuyagus watershed, and we support this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Noreen Kabanton? I hope I was close.
Yes. Good morning. I'm Noreen Kabanton with the Ventura County Resource Conservation District, and we just wanted to show our support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Derek Potney?
Hey, Derek Potney, Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. A massive, a massive amount of work has gone into this. I've come into this very late in the process, and I'm just amazed at the cooperation and just the level of dedication to this project. We're privileged to be one of the projects selected to proceed with this huge application. I just want to say this is an incredibly important funding opportunity that helps not only our conservancy fulfill its mission, and hopefully all the stakeholders in the Ventura River watershed. I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Taylor, did you wish to speak or just show your support?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a-
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
With my love being to all water people, you're my favorite people, I make the motion that we approve the recommended action.
I'd like to second that with compliments to everybody that got involved in terms of cooperation, and that was just a small joke, and just how many people heard and support, but also compliments to Sue.
Don't leave yet.
Sue, you've done, over and over again, you've demonstrated a great ability to bring people together from lots of different agencies, and I think this is just another example of doing that. So to everybody who took off their sort of individual hat to work together, and to Sue, my compliments.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the motion carries. You can leave.
No, but I've got comments to make.
Yeah. Now, we will continue with comments. Supervisor Long?
I just want, thank you for being here. Sorry, sorry, it seemed like it was a rushed moment, but because I know, and I know all the board members do, that the tremendous work that has gone into this, and the cooperation has just been invaluable, as we've now seen and making it to this list, and my question would be, how do we protect our position and bump somebody else out of there?
Exactly.
You know, who do we lobby? And, and, you know, I have to believe that the evaluators of this are really hands-off as far as being able to be lobbied, but, you know, we need to protect our position, and if anything, advance our position, because we, our county is, is very fortunate in having watersheds that are still very much protected and, and respected and honored in this, in this county, and we need to continue to work together and, and protect them. So your, your, your work over all these years, and I've heard from, from a few of you, and certainly through Sue as the chair, that there have been challenging moments, but thank you all for staying at the table and, and bringing this forward to us and getting the good work done.
Throw my, my thank yous and kudos in with everyone else. Certainly, there were moments. It was very difficult, quite frankly, for Cuyagus, who's ready to go and done a lot of work over a lot of years, but through everyone's cooperation and caring in the county for the overall good of the county, I think that we, we did work hard. They stayed at the table, and we certainly understand that when the state says, we encourage you, that means do it. And so we have, and I think that the important thing that, that has come out of all of this is the cooperation, is the respect, and is the trust, and the realization that we've all got to do it together, and that water is going to be the issue in our future. And so I thank my team, the Cuyagus Creek Group, and I thank the, the other two groups for all of us coming together and, and really making this work. And I think that with our cooperation and our signal of cooperation amongst the three watersheds, that may kick us a point or two, when we're not fussing at one another and we're really, we really are going in consolidated. So thank you all. Good work, Sue. I know there were days you didn't think you were going to get it done. We had our moments, all of us, in different ways, but we did it. So the vote has been cast. It is four fifths, yea verily. And thank you all for taking the time to come and show how important this is. Oh, there was some top top. There he goes. Okay, eleven is closed session. Did we finish all the time certains? Yes, we did. Okay. We are on item 23, which is approve and ratify amendments to purchase order contracts for Meditech, et cetera. Good morning.
Good morning. This item is a request for a ratification and approval of amendments to a variety of purchase order contracts. The board letter contains a detailed list of the vendors and the services they provide, as well as the basis of the request for each amendment. I'd be happy to ask any answer, rather, any general or specific questions you might have.
Please direct the recommended action.
I have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Four fifths not required. Machine carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the confusing morning, but people going all over the place. We did that one. So we are now on item 25, Letter of Support for Funding for the Santa Clara River Estuary Project. And Bennett? Mr. Bennett?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So are we up to over 24? That's where, that's where we are. That's where we get this one. Yes.
We're all a little confused.
I think the recommended action is clearly stated in the letter, support for the coastal and estering land conservation program, funding the Santa Clara River Estuary Project. And NOAA has established this program, and we'd like to move the recommended action.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. We did that one. Item 26, item 27. Did we do 24 this morning, or did?
We did 27.
We did 27. Oh, no, 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 that's Supervisor Long. I'm sorry.
Did we do 26?
No.
That's the one I missed. Oh, and I jumped over it because it says, "Policy matter recommendation of Supervisor Parks to support California Welcome Center in Ventura."
We need to do this today because they're going to make their decision next, right away.
I'll move the recommended action. It's, you know, no harm, no harm.
There are two, there are two cities in Ventura County that have applied, and Ventura is one of them. I'm hopeful that Ventura gets it, but I don't want to have the board have to take a position between one city over another city.
So we're just going to support the concept of having a center here?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Is that your motion?
There we go. Yeah, I'd move the recommended action.
Oh, second. Mine was mine. Works for me.
Yep. It doesn't, we'll chip away. It carries.
Carries.
Do you want to support the Ventura one?
I think we'll just leave it right where it is, because otherwise, we'll get really in trouble.
Happy to ask for that.
Okay, now, can we go to item 27? And that is, new appointments and reappointments to the Community Commission for Ventura County, Supervisor Long.
Yeah, thank you. It's self-explanatory. The commission appointments are really structured in the establishment of the commission, so these are just reappointing the agency leaders and county staff to be backup, to fill positions that are needed on the commission. That's my recommended action.
Is it a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. The next item is my item, and that is a recommendation to appoint Mr. Bill Barado to the Ventura County First Five Commission. He has expressed a great interest in doing this, and with his work for economic, Ventura County Economic Collaborative and other nonprofit entities over the years, I believe he's an excellent candidate. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item 29, we did because it required four fifths. Item 30. Move to room five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. That will be the end of the board's regular agenda. We will now go into closed session. I must leave at 12. If we are not done with closed session, we have APCD Standing Committee, and you two. So that would leave Steve the dictator, and we're not going to let that happen.
She's leaving the votes.
We stand, we-
Let me call Supervisor Flynn. We're on alert.
We will adjourn from closed session. Thank you.
Madam Chair, depending upon how the board proceeds, there may be an announcement.
I'm sorry, I forgot. There may be an announcement out of closed session. If there is, we will alert the clerk to come back to the room when we are finished, and we will make that public announcement. Thank you. There may be an announcement out of closed session. If there is, we will alert the clerk to come back to the room when we are finished, and we will make that public announcement. Thank you.